Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. This meeting is called to order. I'd like to turn over the floor to Ally, our planning director, for a few words first.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to introduce Leslie Mendez. Leslie is our new planning manager. And will be taking over as the liaison to the Planning Commission. So she's going to go ahead and just dive right in and start, start right now. Leslie comes from up to us from Berkeley. She worked as a planner there for over 20 years, or actually about 17 years, but has over 20 years of experience working in, in planning. And Leslie also serves as a planning commissioner for the city of El Cerrito. So she has experience and will be able to, to provide the service that, that you need because she has that experience and can anticipate the needs that you have. So I'll go ahead and turn it. Oh, one more thing I wanted to mention. We also have a couple of new commissioners. Commissioner Havenman, I believe we, you were introduced previously, but I just wanted to welcome you again. And Commissioner Harris, welcome to the Planning Commission. Very excited to have you join us. And then I also wanted to mention Commissioner Privatali has joined us again. I am glad I was right because I didn't give you a proper good farewell last time in anticipation of you being back. So glad to see you again. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Leslie and, and Chair Samudzy.
I think yeah. At this time, I'll request staff to call roll for the commissioners who are present or not.
Yes. And again, if you're a DRB meeting, if you can turn off your camera until we get to the joint study session, that would be great. Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Havenman. And I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong.
That's fine. It's Havenman. Present.
Commissioner Lumbersky, Lumber, Lum, Lumba Mersky. Sorry, I'll get there.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado has an absence tonight. Commissioners Saudi also has an absence tonight. Vice Chair Pravitali.
Here.
And Chair Samudzy.
And I'm here as well. All right. So next we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Next we'll move on to meeting procedures. So due to COVID-19 shelter in place order, we've had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff to address how public comment will work this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair Samudzy. This time I'd like to ask staff and project presenters to turn off your cameras, which you have. So thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. Or the public are welcome to attend by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 and entering the meeting ID, which is 872-0645-4435, and then press pound. If you are participating by telephone tonight and wish to provide comments, please press star nine when the chair opens for the public comment. And once your turn is called, press star six to unmute yourself. You will have up to two minutes to speak. And if you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forward to the Planning Commission, at least those that were received prior to 4:00 PM. And will be published to our website. Closed captioning is available for this meeting and the link is available on YouTube. Thank you.
Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address the commission at this time.
And again, if you want to speak and you are in attendance, raise your hand. And if you are calling in, please press star nine. One more second. Is a person. Okay, Jesmina Perez.
Yes.
You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. So my name is Jesmina Perez Esteban, and I am with the Marine Environmental Housing Collaborative. And I would like to make a comment. You know, California has been in a, with a housing crisis for a very long time. People can't find the housing they need and they can't afford it either if they find it. The main reason for this crisis is that we don't build enough housing, including affordable housing. The crisis is particularly acute in Marin, and that includes San Rafael. According to the city's housing element, 53% of the San Rafael renters are overpaying, paying more than, you know, 30% of their income. Part of that, we have serious overcrowding. People are living together just to be able to make ends meet. San Rafael is not doing well meeting its housing goals. We are three quarters of the way to the current eight-year housing element cycle, but San Rafael has approved or filled less than one-third of the units committed to in the current housing element. The next housing element during 16 months must plan for over 3,300, 3,200 new units. The Northgate project could get the city almost halfway to this goal. MAC recognizes that there may be good reasons to make modifications to the latest iteration of the redevelopment plan for Northgate Mall. However, any changes to the site plan or build in configuration must retain the unit count. The Northgate project is an excellent opportunity to address the current housing crisis in the next round of R H and A. These opportunities can be wasted. Please maintain the unit count to the Northgate downtown project. We need affordable housing in San Rafael. Thank you very much.
Okay, so for, for anybody else who wants to speak at this point, please be advised that this is for communication on a topic not on the agenda.
And I don't see anyone else wishing to speak.
Okay, thanks. We'll now move on to the first consent calendar item, which are the minutes from June 29th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. And these two items are approval of the commission meeting minutes and a continuation of the item, the project 5254 Fremont. With the recommended action to continue to September 28. Are there any comments from the public on either item from the consent calendar?
And again, if you wish to talk of anything on the consent calendar, please raise your hand if you are in attendance. And if you are calling in by phone, dial star nine. And I see no, no, no one wishing to comment.
Okay, thanks. All right. At this time, the chair asks if there are any commission comments or edits. And if not, I would entertain a motion.
I motion to accept the minutes.
Who is that? Was that Vice Chair Pravitali?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
And who is that?
Commissioner Havenman.
Okay, thanks. Is there any discussion on those items? Hearing none, I will move to roll call. Staff, I'll ask to conduct roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Present.
It's for voting on the consent calendar.
Oh, sorry.
That's right.
Is it in favor?
You can say yes if you agree or no or abstain.
Yeah, might, might be you abstain if you weren't there.
Okay, I abstain. Thank you.
Commissioner Havenman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumba Mersky.
I'll abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay. Commissioner Mercado is absent. Commissioner Saudi is absent. Vice Chair Pravitali.
Yes.
And Chair Samudzy.
Yes.
Okay, so that's two, four, one, two. Three. Sorry. Three. That's not a quorum.
I'll, I'll change my, I'll, I'll change my vote to a yes.
Thank you. Thank you. You can still vote on the minutes. So was that, and I apologize, was that for the full consent calendar or just the minutes?
That was just for the, the minutes.
The minutes. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll move on to tonight's item, which is the Joint Planning Commission Design Review Study Session. Let's start with a roll call of the DRB members present.
Yes, and DRB members, if you can please now turn on your, your cameras. And I also want to say that we have a new DRB member, Sharon Kowalski. So welcome, Sharon.
Thank you.
All right. Member Kent, Board Member Kent.
Here.
Board Member, I'm going to mess this up. Reg, Reggie?
Reggie.
Reggie, thank you. Board Member Paul. Is absent. Board Member Kowalski.
Here.
Board Member Summers.
Here.
And Board Member Blaney is, is absent as well. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Study session tonight will be conducted as follows. Staff will introduce the project, followed by an approximately 20-minute presentation by the applicant team. The staff will follow with the presentation highlighting specific project areas where commission feedback is requested. Commissioners will then have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions for staff and the applicant team after the presentations. And I want to just emphasize that our focus here, since this is a study session, is on clarifying questions as opposed to presenting opinion at this stage. Comments from the public will follow. Due to the large number of attendees today, those wishing to speak will have two minutes. And at the close of the public hearing, I will call on board members and commissioners in order for project comment and feedback. So for this joint study session item, we're looking at the Northgate Mall redevelopment project on 5800 Northgate Drive. This is a study session for a request for a rezone to the planned development zone, a use permit, an environmental and design viewer permit, review permit, and a tentative map to allow the comprehensive redevelopment of the existing mall into a new phased mixed-use development with retail and approximately 1,320 residences on a 44.76 acre site. At this point, the chair will request staff presentation.
Yeah, and I would like to introduce both Tricia Stevens and Chris Benyon, who are our contract planners with MIG, who we have hired for dedicated project review and design assistance with the project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to staff.
Thank you very much, Leslie, and welcome and greetings to members of the Planning Commission and the Design Review Board. I'm Tricia Stevens, again with MIG as consulting planners, and I have with me my colleague, Chris Baneen, who's our Chief Development Officer. So Chris is going to share the, the screen, and we're going to tech team a little bit on our presentation. We can back it up a little bit. Back up one. Okay, great. As as, as the chair and Leslie had indicated, the redevelopment of the Northgate Mall is a very exciting and unique opportunity to reimagine the mall into a vibrant mixed-use development. And the purpose of the study session here tonight is for the Planning Commission, the Design Review Board, and the, and the public to provide early feedback on design and land use matters. Because this project is so important to the city, this early feedback can help form the project. And so it creates a successful asset to the city in collaboration with the applicant team. And of course, as a study session, there would be no decisions at this point in time. The chair went over the agenda for tonight, so I won't repeat that. So I'd like to move into just some notes about the application. First of all, I'm sure everybody on here is very familiar with the site. But I'll just point out a couple of things. The site is 45 acres in sight and is bounded by Northgate Drive, Los Renches Road, and Los Calinas Avenue on the north, and Mary Dale Road on the, on the east side. To the north and northeast is existing retail and office. And to the east is the Mount Olivet Cemetery. To the south are residential neighborhoods, including single-family homes and apartments. And to the west is on the hillside is Billam Marin Retirement Community, and there's a manufacturing facility. I'd like to talk about the demolition plan first, and this graphic represents the two phases of the project, phase one, the 2025 plan, and phase two, the 2040 plan. The the orange-ish color on this graphic are those structures that would be demolished in the 2025 plan, including the existing old Sears building on the south side, a vast majority of the existing mall site in the middle. On the east side, the demolition, the Home Goods site. And then the yellow represents additional structures that would be demolished during the 2040 plan, the existing Macy's, and the Kohl's site. The blue on this plan represents those portions of the mall that would be retained through the life of the project, including the cinema portion of the mall on the north side and the parking structure. So I'm going to describe some of the main components of the 2025 Phase One Plan. A on this plan before you is the existing cinema, which would be retained and remodeled with additional retail on the north side. B on this plan would be a new major three, which is targeted as a specialty grocer with housing above. C is the renovation of existing mall space with a new major two and the retention of existing retail and restaurants that face to the west. And then D is the retention of the existing Kohl's and the shops in front of Kohl's. And then E would be a 26,000 square foot plaza, which would be new. That replaces the existing plaza area. And then also right in the middle of the site, as proposed by the applicant, would be a retention of the mall structure as a focal point. F is new paths along Los Calinas on the north side of the project. And G is existing parking structure that would be retained. And H includes the addition of 911 housing units up to four, five stories in height with self-contained parking on the south and east portions of the site. And then I is the 96-unit affordable housing community on parcel one, and that 96 units is inclusive in the 911 housing units. So on the, this is a graphic of the 2040 Phase Two Plan. So on this plan is A, on A is the addition of a 35,000 square foot town center in the center portion of the site. B is new retail, including a major one with housing above to replace the existing Kohl's building. And then C is, C both on the west side and on the east side is the addition of additional 409 housing units. And D is the addition of more restaurants and retail on the paths on the north side along Los, Los Calinas. I'd like to step through the requests and the planning entitlements that would ultimately be approved by the Planning Commission and the City Council. These include a zone change to the planned development overlay zone. It's anticipated that there will be a development agreement with this project, a parcel map that divides a property into separate parcels, a master use permit, an environmental and design review permit, and then of course, the certification of the EIR. I'd like to explain for everybody here the steps in this process. As you can see, we're fairly early in the process. And a formal submittal has been made by the applicants, and there's been some initial outreach. There's been a couple of community meetings held by, conducted by the applicant. Right now, we are, of course, in the study session. So in the future, we anticipate, anticipate the initiation of the EIR, and we do expect there will be changes to the project that would be reflected in the EIR, and that process will be beginning soon. All throughout the process, there will be additional outreach and opportunity for community comment, both as part of the EIR process and other outreach efforts. And then ultimately, the Design Review Board will be making a recommendation, and there'll be public hearings and decision by the Planning Commission and the City Council. So at this point, I'm going to turn things over to Chris Baneen, who, my colleague, and he's going to talk about the guiding principles. Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia. Yeah, I'm going to briefly go through the guiding principles here, and then again, to reiterate, we're going to go ahead and switch screens over to the applicants, and then I'll come back with another brief presentation afterward. But we wanted to underscore that in embarking upon review of this project, staff developed a set of principles that were identified and embodied in concert with or agreed to by the applicant team. And those principles are, of course, outlined more specifically in your staff report. But as you consider things this evening in this study session, it's good to highlight these, starting with mixed-use community. And I think we're all aware that the retail, dining, services, housing components, parks, entertainment, there are a lot of different components in front of you this evening, and developing a mixed-use community here, truly mixed-use is certainly at the forefront of the guiding principles. Along with that is both internal connectivity and external connectivity. Internal, meaning we want to make sure that there are robust connections within the site, great street connectivity, a walkable bicycle-friendly environment, transit facilities, bicycle facilities located within the site. So it's easy to get around and easy to get, you know, to the edges of the site within it. Then extending that to the external connectivity to and from surrounding neighborhoods, nearby destinations, certainly the transit facilities, rail facilities, is a critical component of what we believe any planning should be done on this site. Housing, of course, is of top of mind in the county and across the state. That is critical. And we believe that this site should provide diverse housing that is accessible and affordable to all people who live and work in Marin County. Sustainability is critical, of course, as you all have outlined in your policies as a community or at San Rafael, rather, we here have done. Ensuring environmentally and friendly design, sustainable design to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, minimize water and energy use, improve surface water quality, critical. And as a part of that, it's of course related to mobility with respect to pedestrian, bicycle, and transit travel. Flexibility is also something we outlined, whether that's in site infrastructure and other components to ensure that there are viable commercial activities. Any site should be feasibly developed and operable over time and, and should be able to, any plan should be able to, to a certain extent, you know, adjust to market demands. We believe that some built-in flexibility is key. Edge conditions are critical, not just with respect to that, that pedestrian bicycle connectivity, which is part of A and B, but also with respect to how people enter the site. Does it feel welcoming, accessible? And are we respecting the neighbors outside the site? And are we respecting the neighbors outside the site along the different edges to ensure that adjacent neighborhoods and other uses are respected in those relationships? Finally, architectural cohesion through specific building elements and landscape elements, we believe as a part of the guiding principles, should definitely, there should be some cohesion, strong cohesion to create a strong and harmonious sense of identity and place. This place, of course, is marked in many people's minds over the decades in this location. We should make sure that the coming years and decades have that sense of identity and place in a new era moving forward. So with those guiding principles as an overarching approach, we now pass that off to the applicant team. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Yes, so is it us?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for in having us tonight. My name is Steven Logan, Vice President of Development. Next to me is Dave Geiser, Managing Director, Design and Construction. And so, we're very happy to be here tonight. And we're going to show you some, a couple of screens here.
Andy, why don't you bring up our screen?
And so this is, you know, to the next, we just want to talk about, you know, as Melon Guyer bought this project back in 2017. And, and we looked at a lot of ideas for the site. You know, we looked at housing, big box, what's to do with Macy's, what's to do with Kohl's? How are we going to do this whole entire thing? And, 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 you know, we, we had challenges with that. And, and, you know, after we bought Sears in 2018, we figured out, hey, you know, there could be housing on the side. What do we do? But Costco came to us. And, and the next slide will show you how Costco laid out. 28 pumps, Costco on the south side, you know, not, what are we going to do with the rest of the mall? Home goods, Macy's, Kohl's, have long-term leases and what are we going to do? And, and this, this plan was not received well by the community. And, 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 you know, being in front of the Planning Commission and DRB, we heard a lot of that. And, and that happened at the end, November 19. And, and, and we really thought about this after, after that, and the pandemic happened. And so us as a company really, you know, kind of went back and understand, we need to understand what's going to happen to us as a, as a firm and how we're going to, you know, make sure that we get the right, you know, income and the right tenants here, you know, over a period of time in our entire portfolio. And so, you know, that took us about such a seven months. And, and about, about that time, we came back and said, hey, what can we do to the mall? What can we do? And, 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 and what we heard from the community is, don't do one piece of the, of the property. Look at the entire property. And so we really looked at that and, and figured out what can we do? And, and coming to that, you know, back in, you know, 2020 and 2021, we really figured out what, what is the best for this? And, you know, through that period, you know, we're going to go show you about what we're going to want to do in the next few years to make sure that this project, you know, moves forward. And, you know, with that, we, we're looking at a bunch of entitlements, you know, going forward. You know, here, you know, and staff already laid this out, EIR, planned development agreement and all that. And, and we're going to work through the city and all that. And, and to this date, I know the city's working on, on getting the IR consultant on board. And, and we're very supportive of that. We're working on the technical studies in order to move that forward. And we want something that is going to be for the community and, and move that forward. And, and it's housing. And Dave's going to express that forward here in, in a little bit, moving forward. And so, next slide, you know, we'll talk about our community outreach. You know, we had a lot of community outreach during the Costco process. And we heard a lot of negative feedback, and then that's fine, and, and that's good. But now we've come forward and we have reached out to reasonable, responsible, both Marin. And, and 22, 23 meetings we have had with the community and, and trying to understand what the best way is to make the entire site, you know, representable of the community. And, and, and tonight, we're going to, we're going to show you how we're going to move forward. And is it perfect? No, but you know, that's what we're here for, is comments from the community and from the commission and then DRB to make sure that we can try and make the best plan moving forward. And the next slide is going to show you this, you know. There, there's a few things we have to recognize here is that, yes, we're going to demolish the, the portion of the mall. Retail in a, in a, in a closed mall is dead. But we have to recognize that we also need amenities for the retailers, but we also need parking. Parking is a huge thing with retailers. They need parking in front of their door. We need to do that. We need to push that forward. And that is a huge deal for us moving forward. But we also understand the community's belief for these amenities and moving forward. And so we really, really sat down over the pandemic, trying to figure out how best to make sure that the site circulates well and moves well through everything. And Dave and Andy are going to move forward right now and talk about how we took that from this site plan in order to move forward, you know, through the, the San Rafael, you know, 2000 Vision Plan and how we're going to try and make the site better for everybody. And I'll turn it over to Dave and Andy and let them talk about this moving forward.
Right. Next slide, Andy. So everyone, Dave Geiser here, a Bandit Director, Belong Guard Partners. I've been a member of the firm for about 25 years, but I don't do this alone. With us tonight are architects, our retail architect, Chris Beckman with Phil Paoli, Chek Fong with Studio T-Square, our landscape architect, Keith Bittermeyer with Urban Arena, and our local civil engineer, Wayne Leach with CSW. And, and they're here to answer specific questions. They have them. But again, we work in concert with these local firms to bring you the best product and local knowledge of, of the area and the markets. So when we start our site planning process, we, you know, I'm going to give some context of the site plan that, that Trish with MIG laid out for you, kind of how we got from, from where we are today to our proposed plan. We started looking at the site and, you know, where are the views? Where's the sun coming from? Where, you know, where are the, who are the tenants that we need to keep for now? What are future opportunities? Where are our connections to freeways and transit and other roadway networks? And what's in place today? What do we keep? What do we give up? And, and what's not working today and what is working? And so this slide is, I'm not going to go into this, but more than just to understand it, we took, spent a lot of time onsite and with our sketch paper and, and really trying to figure out, you know, where do things belong and what's our, what's our best opportunity here? Next slide. And so what we come up, what we came up with is, you know, the idea that we need the neighborhood, the market, the project needs housing. We think that if we're going to create a successful mixed-use, vibrant mixed-use center, we need housing, we need retail, we need open space, we need, you know, all the things in the guiding principles that, that Chris laid out for you. So we, we organized a residential to the south. We look at our existing connections and neighbors and streets and, and keep as much as we can. We look at the cinema and, and they, they want to stay. So, so we're going to keep those guys. Macy's and Kohl's, they have long-term leases. They stay for now. And then, but then what's our opportunity? And since the mall itself, as Steven says, since the mall is not, was failing and the pandemic only hastened that, we have a whole center vacant mall that we think serves us best by tearing it down. And so, but the parts that are successful, like the shops that are facing the west there and, 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 you know, some of the other outline paths, they do well, so we're going to keep those. So again, but we also look at creating walkable communities, sensible connectivity, create pocket parks and large community gathering areas, sustainability. And Andy will give us later, how do we build a project for tomorrow? But also takes advantage of, of, you know, responsibly use of, of our resources. And, and we'll talk more about that. Next slide. So how do we get there? And so you saw this before in Tricia's slides, that the parts of the mall, we're going to have to demolish to get there. I won't spend time on this, next slide. But this brings us to our, our 2025 plan. And I guess we'll, we'll start by saying, this doesn't get built all at once. The 2025 plan was meant as, starting with what we think are entitlements being done, our construction drawings being drawn and approved, and tenants lined up. We think we're breaking ground and opening some of this in 2025, but it's going to probably take anywhere from five to 10 years to build out Phase One. So none, so how this happens and how this comes online has been finally determined. But this is the start. Phase One is the, is the first step of, of the project. And so what you see is the cinema being, by the way, Century Theater loves this location. They want to remodel. They want to add a huge IMAX theater. They want to stay. We said, great, you can anchor our, our new town center concept with entertainment and really be popular, a popular tenant here. Great, you're in. And again, we talked about building the residential around the south and the east of the project. We're doing that in a series of developments of three to 400 units on the larger pieces. We're proposing a 90 to 100 unit affordable housing complex in parcel one. And the reason is this, we, there's nothing on covering that site today. We think we can partner with an affordable housing builder and get that built today, you know, early in the process, first out of the gate. And so that's why we're, we're putting that there. We know we're going to have other units that we're going to have to integrate in the project, but we think we can jump out of the gate, addressing some serious housing needs early. Again, Macy's and Kohl's are staying in this plan. What we're doing is, and you heard Chris talk about in his guiding principles, create this network of streets that helps create, connect these different districts. So we're straightening out some streets and adding some connectivity that doesn't exist today. We've got a fortress mall with a round, you know, ring of parking all around it. And then we're breaking all that up and creating, you know, connectivity for bikes and pedestrians and, and creating these beautiful tree-lined streets, creating the sense of neighborhood, community. And so by doing that, we, we were pushing the, the community area now by Kohl's is bifurcated by a road that really splits that up. Our goal is to straighten the street out, going between there and pushing, pushing that community park area in Phase One up against Kohl's to create a 26, 27,000 square foot open space area that's activated by retail and open space and lawn, ice rink, soccer, movies, gathering spaces. That's what we're planning on there. In front of the cinema, we've got, we have an opportunity, which is usually kind of a dead area in front of the theater. Let's turn that into a dog park, something that not only people from the neighborhood can walk to, people can bring, everyone's bringing their dogs anyway for retail. The neighbors can bring their dog too. What a great way to activate this whole town center. And then we were looking at the space between the cinema and the residential. A really wonderful area for a transition space between the highly active town center and the retail and then the quieter, quieter zones of the residential. So let's put a public park in there that's accessible to all, with tot lots, places to throw the frisbee around, hang out. And we'll talk about potential for artwork on, on some wall spaces as well. So, and then going back a slide, Andy, to our Phase One, I want to see the market there. And creating our town center, we thought would be wonderful to have a, a market, specialty market that really brings people during the day and the weekends, people that have lived there, walking to it, people in neighborhood, biking there, and people in the region are driving there. And so we've got this really wonderful way to activate this town center. Macy's, we're going to close the entrance of Macy's in the mall, we're going to reopen their entrance into the town center. Kohl's already has an entrance facing the town center. And the idea that we then have this, you know, shops that were existing, the shop to a, we're going to rebuild that. We'll see some renders here in a second, that also connect and really invigorate this town center. We've got some opportunities for some pad buildings along Las Galinas. But we're dealing in Phase One, and I want to, this is important here, it releases, they, they not only require a certain parking ratio per square foot, but also have certain areas of control that we need to respect. So we said, fine, we'll deal with that in the next phases. And if, if, if and when Kohl's and Macy's leave, that's not a given. But we, we do believe that, that 250,000 square foot Macy's buildings aren't, are not building any more of them. We think they're on the decline and Kohl's isn't doing any more 80,000 square foot stores either. So we think there's an opportunity to recapture that space as well. And then potentially relocate home goods in the project. So, sorry, I'm, I'm taking too long, but I wanted to get that down on the slide. We'll go quicker. The residential buildings are wrapped by housing units. So all the parking for all those phases are, are screened and located within each individual unit. Next slide. This just shows the second floor, oh, important concept. We listen to community, our early concept discussions with them. And what we heard back is that, hey, we think that the housing up against the southern neighborhoods, it, it's too, it's too harsh. We, we need, we need some kind of treatment there and, and some sensitivity to the neighborhood. So we're two levels. You'll see the color coding there where the red is the two-story. Lighter colored, the three, four, five stories. Another thing we heard too, is the, the need to have more bike paths and walkability on our streets. And, and we're working on that in, in future phases. Next slide. This just illustrates here the total number of residential units within this first phase, about 911 units, with our parking averages 1.55 spaces per unit. So all of our guest parking is completely taken care of within our parking as well. We're struggling with parking. We're 3.88 per thousand with all of our retail. We, we've got some parking issues that we're going to need to deal with moving forward. Next slide. So open space in Phase One, we're looking over 300,000 square feet of landscape and planting area, dog park, community space of 26,000. We've got a garden that we're planning up in parcel one. Other pocket parks not only exist at entrances, Mary Dell, Las Galiz North Gate, but then a revitalization of the pocket park that exists over on the north side where BJ's is over there. And a lot, so this is an enlargement of our Phase One town center. The other thing that we've done, we'll see in some slides here, is we're trying to figure out, and we, and what we heard from the community as well, we need an anchor to this, to this town center. So what we've, what we're proposing to do is the mall was enclosed previously, but the structure is still there. And so our idea was to leave part of the pavilion structure turned into an outdoor shade structure that can serve as an anchor to future town center development. And so again, ring the town center with outdoor activities for the retail tenants, but also parks and pet stops and community areas, all anchored by the market, the theater with their plazas, really create this dynamic space. Next slide. So this is the structure I was talking about. So, so this is a leftover from the mall that's actually used to close and cover the mall today. You see in the background, the theater is planning on reusing their section. So as you enter today, that gets renovated as well. So you see the big tall open space inside, but there's a connection to the anchor of the town center with this slide. So here's the edge of the theater. Like I said, you see the new IMAX theater on the left. They're going to keep their large open foyer that goes into the mall now. We're going to redo that with a tower with an outdoor plaza. You see the dog park on the left. But again, and then new shops on the right with a, with a new upscale design. Next slide. So this is those new shops too, that are facing town center on the other side. New retail design by Phil Paoli here. We think it's really fun and creative, relevant for retail, new retail tenants, outdoor dining, et cetera, new tenants. And that's both local and national. So here we are in our specialty market on the, on the east side, facing west of the town center, where we have three levels of housing over the ground floor, a specialty market. And again, trying to use for architecture, we're talking about cohesive architecture, trying to use materials and pushes and pulls in the balconies and materials and having gabled roofs and again, very warm materials to create distinctive feel and industrial look of feel to the residential. Next slide. This is the third, this is the big open space park between the theater and the residential. Also, again, that transition space we talked to. Next slide. This is the, this is the parcel one residential. We're working with Studio T-Square and Chek here to, to, what we heard from the community is they'd like to have some architects that maybe mimic some of the architecture that we found locally. So the, the concept here was a Usonian-type design from Franklin Wright with a large horizontal planes, the arches in here, creating some of the, the materials, the look, the feels of some of that Usonian architecture. And here you stood, would exist here. And the bill is oriented, so the bill is oriented in such a way to create more open space to transition to the neighborhoods. We're not pushing the building. to transition to the neighborhoods. We're not pushing the buildings up to the street. That was the point I was gonna make here. Next slide. So then borrowing more of the architecture, we set a lot of i- homes in the area. So that we challenged our architect, uh, Studio T Square, to come up with a design that utilizes some of the, the planes of the, of the, the design of i- homes and creating these rooftop terraces and low-slung roofs. But then you also see the stepping where we come from the five to the four to the three to the two-story up against the street. So again, creating rich, dark, low-shone cheetos and North Gate Drive, uh, getting the step down of the buildings, activating store from really dark architecture with balconies, materials, um, and colors. Next slide. So phase two, the idea here is that if we get control of Macy's back, if we get control, hey, what do you, we'd like to see a plan for the entire sentence. Right. Well, let's take a forward look. We have it as a twenty forty plan. This is gonna happen ten years earlier. It could happen ten years later. But we're, when it does happen, we'd like to have a plan that fits. So that's why we're looking at this. Next slide. So what do we do? So on the Kohl's parcel, um, we convert to the ground floor retail center. When we do that, we move the community, uh, outdoor area into the center of the town square that's then, remember, backed off by that tall pavilion structure that's on the, that's on the east side. So that, that's the change there. And again, uh, housing over retail on the Macy's side, residential ground floor retail with, uh, with residential up above. And, and again, with shop space supporting not only the, the town square, but also supporting the, the, uh, the parking field to the north and then adding more retail opportunities, uh, to, to anchor and hold the north end of the site at Las Colinas. Next slide. Next slide. So, uh, again, here you'll see that, that our unit count, uh, is up to about, so we add about four hundred units, uh, in the, in the second phase. Um, and the retail comes down with the reduction of the Macy's, obviously, and Kohl's. Our retail square footage comes down and our parking gets into a comfortable, if not, uh, overparked, a situation uh, that we can again utilize. We lose parking. We started doing development. We can create more open green space to capture some of those parking spaces into more green space. Next slide. Here's again, the, the, our open space calculation goes from fifteen and a half percent landscape up to over seventeen percent and up to about three hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet of open space. Next slide. And again, here you see the development of moving the, the opens, the town center, open space area into the center. We're still, we still want to activate the shops parking around like a, like a town center. Uh, but again, activating these, these shops with parking and open space. And, and we're still working on the programming for the open space. Uh, but we think it'd be lively, uh, great gathering spot, weekend, um, a music series, start before, uh, it's gonna be five K run or whatever community event, uh, can happen here. Really create that, uh, heart of the, of the project. Next slide. So this is the, the former Kohl's building where the Panera sits today. Ground floor retail, general sidewalks, outdoor dining, retail merchandising area, an architecture that harkens to something that we find familiar in Marin, whether it's downtown San Rafael or Petaluma or Healdsburg or some of them. Uh, you know, a rich, uh, uh, materials and a style that we think, um, really provides a sensible feel to what the, the community can be comfortable with. Next slide. This is the former Macy's building, again, on the corner of the town square. Ground floor retail with residential up above. It's a five-story residential product, but where it's over retail, it builds a three-story. It is to break up the massing with different materials to make it look like different buildings. Um, and truly will be, you know, different buildings, um, with different materials and, and activities, um, not only for the residential, but the, the retail. Next slide. Then we see the, the north side of what was Macy's here. This is now ground floor retail with residential up above. You see the massing broken up. We see another major tenant here on the right, uh, major three, I believe this, no, major two, I believe this, uh, which is a mall conversion into another retail softwood tenant facing the parking lot. Next slide. And this is our entrance off Mary Dell. And, and what we heard from the community is, hey, we need to use this opportunity potentially to have something more of a gateway and also have that same bicycle and pedestrian connection. So this will be one of our study areas that, yeah, how do we create more of a gateway here at this entrance? And, and make it more welcoming, but more pronounced as you, as you, one, connect to the smart train, but two, enter the project, uh, off the freeway. Next slide. So and Andy, Andy's gonna talk real quickly about some of our sustainable design programming that we've, uh, that we're currently working on.
Yeah, I know this is a really important topic, uh, with the current situation that we're in in California. And I know that the city of San Rafael does have a, um, a mandatory tier one for all our multi-family development. And so some of those, uh, tier one measures would be, you know, uh, sixty-five percent recycling of the demo, non-hazardous demolition waste, uh, designated parking for low-feel efficient vehicles, low-impact development and stormwater treatment throughout the site. So we're redeveloping the site. We're looking at treating all the stormwater that hits the ground. Cool roofs, water reduction of twelve percent of the water use baselines. And, uh, we are hooking the site up to purple pipe for irrigation for reclaim water and optimizing onsite renewable energy, uh, such as solar. And then hopefully we can build upon these, uh, tier one measures and expand into tier two, which, uh, we would build upon these baselines. And some of the examples would be, uh, increasing, uh, fuel-efficient vehicles to a minimum of twenty percent for mixed use. And then, you know, uh, just greater efficiency with the solar and putting it back into the site. And some of the connectivity to community connectivity, the smart train does go towards our voluntary measures towards, uh, sustainable designing as well. So we are continuing the multimodal path from Las Colinas along those red cheetos all the way to North Gate Drive as well as, uh, a bicycle path around, uh, North Gate Drive itself.
Thanks, Andy. Uh, next slide. So that, that concludes our presentation. Again, our team is here to answer specific questions if you have them. General presence if you want. Um, you know, this, I just want to reiterate, work in project, progress. We've had a lot of great input from the community and from the different special interest group. We continue, we've promised, made a, made a commitment to continue to reach out to them, hear their comments and work with them on, on, um, you know, their needs and wants. So again, we're, we're, we're very thankful for the process so far and please feel free to, to ask us any questions.
And then, uh, thank you, Dave. And, and just one last thing. You know, this is a process for the community, which we've heard. And for us to hear from the commission and from DRB tonight, in order for us to take feedback and, and we're gonna go back and figure out what can be done. And we're gonna do everything we can for the community to make that, that going forward. You know, there's, there is an application for a del- a development agreement. And I know that staff is working on getting an EIR, an EIR consultant on board. And so we're working on that. And then we're gonna work through all of that. But we, we are very excited to hear some feedback on this and, uh, from the community and from commissioners and, and please, uh, we're here for, for the comments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, this time, uh, I'll ask commissioners if they have questions for staff or consulting or consulting team. Um, and at this point, I want to keep questions here just to questions of clarification. We have, uh, after public hearing, we'll have, uh, time for further comments. So if you have, uh, if you have questions, uh, just feel free to speak up.
Does that include the DRB or PC first?
Um, this is.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Tricia, do you wanna say, we, we were going to give our brief presentation first before the comments, correct?
Still more. Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
No, I, I, I apologize for interrupting you there. And I realize there's been a lot of presenting this evening. So I'm gonna go through this, uh, pretty, uh, quickly here and, um, and, and move things along. I, as we go back to the staff presentation here, I do want to, uh, mention, I, I believe, we believe there are a number of strong components to this project, mix of uses, a good amount of housing. Um, obviously, a lot of work has gone into the design. And I think there've been, um, you know, collaborative discussions with the applicant along the way. But I do want to present here some questions and considerations for the planning commission and, uh, the DRB members, uh, as, as we, uh, go into the evening's discussion. So I'm gonna share my screen again quickly here. And as I said, I'm going to try to go through this, uh, quite quickly here. And this is, this represents our review of the applicant's site design. And so, um, a- as we look at things, uh, here, uh, I'm gonna go through a series of slides that essentially just raise, uh, questions and considerations for you all. So for example, um, looking at the town square and center of the site, uh, are there ways that the town center can be, uh, a stronger place? Um, and, and achieve the goals and principles that have been outlined? And you see some of those questions here as we zoom in. So for example, uh, the town square are itself, are there design options to avoid surrounding the, the square with, uh, parking and/or circulation on all sides? Um, are there ways to bring building frontages or active retail straight up to that, uh, that open space amenity? Uh, can the size and design of the surface parking right in the middle of this town center, uh, be addressed in some other way? And the applicants have put forth their rationale. We have some questions and considerations for you all here, um, as well as that major three, which is on the, the, the bottom part of the slide here, which I believe is intended to be a, a grocery store of some sort. Um, that can that connectivity, pedestrian connectivity be stronger to what they are outlining as this, uh, town square amenity? So similarly, some questions with respect to circulation and connectivity. There's been a lot of talk, uh, and, and discussion about that already here this evening. Uh, but, uh, do gateways truly convey, uh, convey a strong sense of arrival? Um, as is currently designed? Are there designs to create stronger, more direct bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, uh, or connections rather, into the site from the smart station and other points? Uh, that there may be opportunity along some of these axes to more strongly and explicitly integrate stronger sidewalks or separated bicycle facilities or streets that truly, uh, are, um, you know, engaging to pedestrians as they are striving to achieve that goal of connecting to, uh, the transit station and other facilities. Uh, so those are some of the questions here with respect to housing density and edge conditions. Um, I will say on the housing front, uh, for this group here this evening to consider the mix of housing and, um, and engage in discussion, I think it would be fruitful to talk about the value of providing both rental and for sale housing and in what mix? Is that a consideration there? As well as, um, the dispersment, uh, of affordable housing units throughout different parcels and different phases. There is, um, one residential parcel here that is, uh, targeted for near-term affordable housing development and ensuring that, uh, there is discussion about other places where affordable housing units might go would be a, a strong consideration. Um, and could there be housing, uh, or density in, um, future phases? And this is again, going out toward twenty forty, where, uh, higher intensity uses, particularly on the north side of the site, where you see, uh, the various pads in yellow there. Are those the uses or, uh, or what ultimately should be a part of a, a site plan and ultimate build out? Or are there, uh, other uses and intensities and that density of development that you may want to consider? On the sustainability side, I think a lot of the questions may revolve around, uh, you know, are there options to limit the impervious surfaces that are, uh, on this current site plan? And it's, uh, you know, amount of surface parking? And are there truly strong and identified locations that go deeply into, uh, sustainable stormwater drainage areas, lid technique areas that can be applied to ensure that, uh, surface flow is, is naturally cleaned, uh, and, and taken back into the, the groundwater system? On the architecture side, just a few observations. Uh, there are some, uh, areas where we had questions and discussion about the specific design of ground floor environments. Didn't have long blank walls been mitigated or minimized for stronger pedestrian environment? Um, uh, also along those lines, uh, is there a sense that articulation, colors, materials are, are simplified? Or are there, um, and, and sometimes as you read a, an elevation, as you know, versus seeing it in, in perspective form, it can, it can read a certain way. But, uh, in breaking down the massing of the site, sometimes does that, uh, take away from some of the harmony, harmony and cohesion? I think it's a consideration. Similarly, with, uh, the retail architecture where, um, keeping some of the current retail or phasing in retail over time, what is the sense of, uh, cohesion there on the ground plane? Uh, and, and some of the materials and planar surfaces and colors, you know, all of those things to consider in, uh, having architectural cohesion, which of course was one of our guiding principles. Quickly here on the landscape and open space design side, um, you know, not just thinking through location and size, but what are the specific components and elements of spaces? Are we being truly sustainable and, and drought tolerant? I know some of these are just renderings right now. I think some of the specifics are, are certainly gonna need to come into play, as you all know. Uh, and then, uh, you know, some of the renderings here are, uh, you know, are they fully accessible environments and ADA compliant? And of course, that would be, uh, something that we would absolutely need to, uh, consider and mandate. But ensuring that that thought process and design is taken into account from the beginning and not kind of brought in, uh, toward the end. And, and then, uh, you know, a, a full streetscape lighting plan, obviously, are kind of next steps. Uh, the entryways and, and features, when we talk about, hey, this place wants to be welcoming. We want to, uh, offer people great entry into the site. How are we doing that with signage and art and wayfinding and other things? I think, um, that is for your consideration and questioning here this evening. So, uh, went through very quickly there and thank you for your patience through all the presentations. And we will turn it back to you, Commissioner.
Okay, thanks.
And, uh, Christopher, I think we'll refer to that when we have, uh, we go back after public comment to our, um, our discussion with the, with the design review board and the commission. Cause I think it would be useful to have those questions up to gather discussion. So thanks for that. Yeah. And then to answer an earlier question, um, this period of questions of clarification, it's open to both commissioners and design review board members.
Okay, great. I have a simple question. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Look, okay, great. Hey, um, we've seen this site so many times over the years when Masridge developed it into what it is today. Um, and it's just a question and the answer, I'm sure the answer is probably no for legal and, um, leasing reasons. But, you know, we were stuck with fifteen years ago, we were stuck with the Macy's building being untouchable and other buildings being untouchable and the Sears building being untouchable because of these leases. And parking being untouchable because of these leases. And, you know, at some point, as a member of, um, this board and volunteer for this town and lifelong residence, I gotta throw up a question that a lot of the public's probably asking and say, why? What, what can we do to hasten this full proper development of this site without this, um, ice sore of a couple of buildings and these anchors that are actually causing a problem to this site being properly looked at? And I, I'm sure there's legal reasons and whatnot and leases and afraid of lawsuits and whatnot. But I would love to hear the owners just confirm that with me and just say, yeah, we really are stuck. But it's been a roadblock into this site being actually cohesively looked at for decades. So, you know, at some point, I wish those things could go away. So if the owners could just comment and say, yeah, we're stuck, that's a good enough answer, but I don't like the answer.
Hey Stuart, so, uh, Stephen Logan here, um, yes, you know, Kohl's has time on their lease and Macy's has, I mean, unfortunately has thirty years on their lease and they have site plan control. You know, we totally agree with you. Should that, we, we should get Big Box out of there. And I mean, does anybody want to shop or be a part of a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot Macy's building? I mean, but, yeah, and so that's what we showed in our plan on twenty forty, how to redevelop the, the entire site. And, and, and we're, we're, we're totally in agreement with you. You know, Kohl's is probably up in, uh, five years, five, six years. And, you know, is that, is that site redeveloped for residential or is it, or is it more retail? You know, we understand that there's, you know, retail sales tax to go back to the city and all of that too. So we, we're, we're very, we're very understandable about all of those aspects. And, and so we, we totally hear your, your, your thoughts. understandable about all of those aspects and so we totally hear your thoughts and
It's one of our biggest challenges is what so the answer is unfortunately that the answer is yes.
Yeah, we're stuck. That much sucks.
If I can, I'm sorry, I'm trying to put on my video to know from, I just would like to announce that subsequent to roll call Larry Paul, a DRB member has showed up as well. So he is officially part of this meeting. So welcome. Fort Member Paul.
Well, thank you. I'm saying I apologize for being late. I was in a job site meeting at the blogger, I thought, but as long as I got the floor, I'd like to echo some of the same comments that are questions that Christopher had. He took a lot of my thunder because I had a lot of questions about, you know, the arrangement of the elements. I guess before, we're not commenting now, but I just a couple of questions is one, have you considered? Have you considered the impact of four and five story buildings on the southern end of the site and how they're going to relate to the neighbors on on the southern end? Because that's, I think, going to be a issue. The other question, and I think was that if you need those kinds of densities, have you considered putting them on the northern end of the site? And possibly building over parking? Because I mean, right now, we've got a got a sea of parking. And it takes a lot, it takes a lot of space up that could be built over. And that would free up a lot of open space and make a much more, I think, palatable transition from the current mall to the neighborhoods around it. And then the other question is, the the architecture seems to be very urban. And this is a suburban site. So I'm wondering if you had considered a little more suburban type of an architecture, because I think there are going to be some pushback on that as well from the neighbors. I guess those are basically three questions that I had.
Well, thanks, Larry. And you missed earlier, but we did talk about the transition. One of our original changes in the plans was changing the southern residential so that it now steps down to the neighborhood from five to four to three to two stories. And we went through that in our in our plans, how that how that comes into effect. Related to the parking on the north end of the site. You know, the when we break this product up into districts and we get rid of the continuous parking all the way around the fortress mall, each of these districts now needs to work for the retailers on its own. I can't tell the Sears guy to go park on the north end of the site and I can't tell the Macy's guy to go park on the south end of the site. Those parking areas need to work for those tenants in the in the ratios to which their leases dictate. I think there is future opportunity for the for the parking lot areas. They're not, they're not in our timeframe. In other words, I think there's a phase three and a phase four and a phase five with the with the continual evolution of a mixed use community such as this. And so in our, we also think that that type of density and development is going to drive us out of a, it's going to create mitigation measures today that we're not going to be able to address. As far as the architecture goes, we're happy to look at alternatives. And I explained in our presentation, we were trying to draw on some of the Frank Lloyd Wright architecture for some of the architecture, trying to draw on some of the Eichler design for some of the other residential buildings. The retail architecture is really, we trust Phil Paoli and to have a really forward looking, modern. When I say modern, I don't mean modernism like the modernity of contemporary modern, but just modern is up to date, relevant type design for the retail tennis today. And we think we've achieved that, still using a lot of wonderful materials. Happy to work with staff and the community and different groups if there's something that someone finds particularly offensive or needs to change. Hey, the time to change it is now, right? When it's just lines on paper. So we're open to listen to that.
I had a question about the open space or the park area. You mentioned something about a tot lot. Would there actually be a formal for kids, swing sets, stuff like that? Active engagement recreation in those areas? So there would be enough space for the people who lived in the apartment with kids to use that as their neighborhood park?
And the public, yes.
Okay. And also the color palettes, those are really that that white is that stark white? I mean, are we? The only place to me you should have that white is in Greece with a blue tile roof. But that's, that's actually a bone white, like, is that correct? That's a fair representation?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is.
All right, not a fan.
And again, like we said, we think in trying to an architectural cohesiveness, we're using some of that white, some of the retail architecture. We brought that over to the residential. If the opinion, if the consensus is, hey, we need more colors and materials, more than happy to take a look at that.
I'm a fan of the, I mean, I love Larry, but I really like the the look of it. I think it feels pretty. Can I see how excited I am to have the DRB here? Someone said you guys were gone. I said, no, I would know if they're gone. So it's great to be all together and it sucks. We're not all two together. Hopefully that'll happen. Yeah, but anyways, great to see everyone and thank you guys. And I think this is, I mean, I know it's not comment time, but I really like it. I've been to the mall and it's, I teach at Terre Lende High School. It's crickets, man. And once C is closed, I have no reason to go there. So, so thank you, guys. So more later.
Good to see all you too.
I've got a question. I mean, your green open space is obviously a very important component of this project and you have a pretty aggressive program for those spaces. But we see frequently is those spaces ultimately are used for stormwater management, which radically changes how they look and feel and how they're used. So I'm a little curious, is there just a lot of permeable paving onsite or ultimately are you going to use those spaces for some of your stormwater management?
So we're working with our civil engineer right now in Lake at CSW with our, you know, our C three plan. How we're going to address, by the way, none of the stormwater that fall, none of the stormwater falls that site today is treated. At the end of the day, it will all be treated. And right now we're developing strategies to to whether the planters permeable pavers, permeable concrete. But the areas that we're showing as open space, active lawn area, the intent is that stays open space, active lawn area. We're not going to turn that into a a big swale with a with a drain inlet in the middle of it. That the that the planter areas that we have will be, you know, the curbs will be cut to allow water to infiltrate and be treated as bio swales and in those areas. So we're developing that plan now, but but no, all of our active open spaces that we're showing today are intended to stay that way.
All right, that's
I have something.
Because you do have a lot of hard surfaces there to deal with.
You're correct, we do. It's a challenge.
Hi, I'm Sharon Kowalski, DRB member. It seems to me that the heart of this project is the town center park. And really, I don't think there's a there there. I think that's one of the first things that ought to be developed. You need to put the heart in this project. And it's it's parking until 2040 until or even beyond, you said, you're not sure you're going to make that number. I really feel like this town center needs to be front and center. This is the the hook. This is the main part of this. And the retail needs to interact with it. And you can't have all that parking in the middle. I just think that your focus needs to be on the what you're providing the community. And I'd like to see that taken into account.
Let's let's keep our comments at this point to just questions of clarification. We'll have a discussion period after public comment.
Okay.
Any other questions of clarification?
Any also, I know there's recycled water lines that run to Terre Lende High School. So I know they're either down Nobalbein or down Manuel Freitas. Any thoughts of doing, you're going to get beat up, you know, new housing and drought. Any thought on using gray water systems for the sewer sewer toilets, things like that? Any chance that's going to happen?
Uh, you know what? We haven't taken the plunge on gray water systems for the residential yet. We're focused on the recycle, the purple pipe for the landscape. We're looking at, you know, solar, we're looking at using electric instead of gas. But we've not gone as far as looking into gray water systems for the waste.
Thank you.
Chair Sumitzi, I have a few questions. This is John Kupchak. Okay, the first one is actually for city staff. What would be the plan to ensure there's sufficient water given all the housing units?
Yeah, so anytime a project development comes in, it does get referred to the water district as well as the sanitation district to ensure that there's proper service, proper supply. And so that needs to occur. So there needs to be both the 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 resource, the water as well as the infrastructure. And so that will need to be signed up. And I know a lot of folks have concerns right now about the drought. And so we will move forward with that and maybe planning director, GDC wants to add something. And then if there isn't sufficient infrastructure, that would be a required mitigation as the project goes through if it were to be approved.
Sorry, yeah, so that's correct. And the other thing, you know, as part of the environmental review, we'll be evaluating the water capacity. But I also wanted to mention that the site, there is a purple pipe around the northern part of Terre Linda. So the applicants would likely be required to connect to the purple pipe and to help reduce the water use.
So Ellie, we are, we are proposing to tap into that purple pipe throughout. And so hopefully to add to that purple pipe connection is looking at and don't want to get into the weeds, go down the rabbit hole with all the green building, but
Sorry, Andy, I just want to make sure that the question, the questions and answers are by the planning commissioners. And so if they have a question for you, they'll sorry, I didn't mean
Okay, understood. Great, thank you. My next question is also for city staff. Is there any intention to incorporate or require incorporation of Northgate three into the Northgate two planning process? Like for instance, under the PDA?
I'll jump in unless you want to, maybe you can add if you have anything to add, Leslie. There is no plan to incorporate the two at this time. Perhaps as part of a future, like you said, as part of a future PDA, but at this time, it's only focused on that, what you saw tonight.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple more questions and I know Commissioner Havenman has a question. See his hand up. So I'll try to be brief. The next question is for the applicant. Is there any reason that you concentrated affordable housing into the, I think it's like housing area one as opposed to dispersing it through throughout the entire development, which I think is more of a modern approach to affordable housing?
So Commissioner, we we've looked at it in both ways. We feel that if we, and we've talked to a bunch of, you know, affordable housing developers. And we feel that if we commission them and we've been in 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 contact with them, we can, we can offer a better and more diverse type of affordable housing component in there, which the amenities are going to be the same with every other housing component. And and we're not going to meet, you know, the 10% with just that component, but the other units will be dispersed through, you know, parcels two, three and four for the first phase. And then the second phase, those, that would have to be, you know, you know, about the affordable housing to meet your, it's a 10%, but you know, we feel that that is the best place here because, you know, we can build the affordable housing much quicker than the rest of the housing is going to be built, because that housing doesn't take 10 to 12 years to be built on that side. But you're going to have affordable housing and work for housing for your community much quicker than you're going to have the rest of the housing up there. And so you know, it's, and we understand where the zoning and the general plan sits. But we feel that is the best way to make this site plan work. And so, you know, hopefully that that answers your question and 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 yes, is it perfect today? No, but we can make it more perfect tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. My next question is also about housing. What's the percentage of owned versus rental that's currently in the performer?
Current today is it's all rental.
Okay, is there, is it feasible to include a portion that would be owned?
We can look at that, yes.
Just looking at my notes here. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Sumitzi, this is Commissioner Havenman. I do have a couple of questions for for the applicants. First, I don't think I saw any bicycles in the images. Can you talk a little bit about your bicycle accommodations in terms of you know, storage areas in terms of separated pedestrian and bikeways?
Yeah, sorry, we'll work on any more images of bicycles in the future. That wasn't our, we didn't have the time to get those all dialed in. There will be adequate bike store, not only bike racks, bike lockers, all per code, well distributed throughout the site. We're working, one of the the things that we're working on, and we've shown in previous community outreach meetings, we're working on a series of street sections that show bifurcated sidewalks, bike lanes. And how to create more friendly streets for bikes and pets. We're in development of that now. We're just not, we need the building to settle down and where those streets are going to be before we finalize though, but it's part of our plan. As we develop the landscape plan, we'll be, we'll then be included in the next layer, not only all the fixtures and furnishings and of the benches and pots and planters, but also bike racks and and the different types of bike features, whether we have covered racks in some areas or certain bike racks out in front of certain retail tenants and how they're being accommodated, all the residential buildings. That's all the next layer, but it will all be incorporated.
Right. Next question is if it if it's all rental and you're thinking at this point, wouldn't it be possible to transition the affordable housing? You know, once parcels two, three, four, et cetera are developed, transition the affordable from simply parcel one to being throughout the development?
Well, I think that's what Steve was saying is that the affordable that we're showing on parcel one doesn't meet the full requirement for the affordable in the entire phase two development. So whether whether it's whether it's per our current proposal or all the, there will be dispersed affordable throughout the throughout the development.
But is is your image for say in 2050, would parcel one remain entirely affordable?
I think if it's developed that way, the answer is yes. In other words, if we partner with a affordable housing developer, it'll it'll stay affordable just due to how the entitlements are passed.
And Commissioner, I mean, first of all, no one's going to know by the aesthetics and the amenities that are there, that it's an affordable, you know, component. Where the amenities, the the type of fixtures, everything, you know, the, everything is going to be like it's, it's a normal, you know, rental community. And so it's, it's not going to be, you know,
You won't be able to tell the difference between
We will not be able to tell the difference.
Okay, I hear you. And you mentioned that water use would be less than or 12% less than the baseline. I'm not sure what that means. Forgive my ignorance.
Andy? I'll take that. So part of these tier one, tier two thresholds that we have to meet. And one of them is establishing a baseline of water use for the tenants and for the residences that are you know, at the site and then establishing that water use and then providing the measures of reducing that water level baseline that you've established as normal uses, restaurants, retail, housing, so on and so forth, is establishing that threshold and then getting it and providing measures to get that threshold down, right? So so that that's part of that tier one, tier two and the Cal Green building code that we try, we try to get right on tier one. And then if we can, we try to go to the tier two level without going too extreme and providing.
Okay, thanks very much.
So I guess I'm, real quick, so you have phase one, phase two. Are you envisioning entitlements for both phases during this pro planning process? Or are we looking at just phase one with the plan for phase two and then going forward?
So, so Commissioner, are we So, so Commissioner, we are looking, so we heard from the community, we want to see the entire site redeveloped. And so that's what we're showing. You know, the, first of all. Kohl's and Macy's have long-term leases and what they're going to happen. And Kohl's could be redeveloped or what happens to Macy's. But the community specifically said during the Costco period, they want to see what's going to happen on a long-term basis for the entire mall. And so that's what we've done. And that's, and that's, and that's, and that's what we put forward. You know, it's going to take time to get there, but I mean, we're initially gonna, you know, move forward on, on, you know, the, the. The residential on the south side, demolishing some of the mall and, and, and making it a town center for the, the community can enjoy and Dave is gonna.
Yeah, the short, the short answer is the 2040 plan is our plan that we're entitled and studying through the civil process.
Okay, so, so the in for a penny, in for a pound.
That's correct.
And, and I, I gotta say, because I sat through Costco, we were used as tools to try and get the gas station in Nevada. I didn't believe for one heartbeat that they were serious. And you guys have to, I understand that, but I believe it was just done as a bargaining chip. For Nevada to get their gas station and it worked. So, I mean, just.
They wanted.
Any more questions?
I just have one question for the applicant. You talked about community connectivity to smart, multi-modal access. I didn't see any extension or diagrams that showed any development outside of the perimeter road. Is that correct? Or was that just not shown or is something more planned?
There's something more planned and it just wasn't shown. The, the city has developed a series of options for that smart train station. At the end of the Mary Dell connection down to Smart Train. We're, we need to work closer with them and, and our civil engineers engage in, in one, picking the plan that's preferred. And, and also working on how that transitions under the Mary Dell overpass. There's a tricky connection through there that hasn't been worked out yet. So there's nothing to show. I will tell you that we're, we're currently redeveloping the, the tire center that sits on the corner in Northgate three today. And part of the, the remodel of that building is the extension of the, um, the multimodal path behind that building on the Northgate three property. So we're already working to, under construction today, to extend that multimodal path. So, so look, look for more plans of how it continues to connect all the way down to Smart Train.
Commissioner Sumitia. Okay, yeah, actually, I was going to ask you if we could review your plans for Northgate three at some point. Obviously in connection to Northgate two.
So those have actually already been reviewed by, by the city. The remodel plans for the center and the buildings themselves and the, and the, the pad building have already been approved by the city, the remodel plans. And the first phase that is the shop building, then that, that's actually permitted and under construction today.
Great, thank you.
And there's someone else with a question too? All right, no more questions. What we'll do now is open up for public hearing. Where I ask staff on how to make public comment, what I want to do is just kind of clarify. The purpose for those that are wanting to make comments, I know that this is a hot topic and a lot of people likely want to speak. But I want to just remind folks that the purpose of this meeting is not to make a decision about this. And thus we are not discussing the merits of the project as a whole, but rather addressing and providing feedback. Specifically for the areas that were requested. So just keep in mind that this is a study session, this is not an approval. Of the actual project itself. So I just, I want to make sure that we're sort of focused on that at this, at this stage. And again, another thing that I'm going to remind public is that. There, since there are going to be a lot of people who want to speak, I want to refrain from folks simply rehashing things that other people have said. So if this is a, I agree with whom so and so said earlier. You know, just for sake of time, I would ask just to refrain from adding comment if you have no unique comments to add on top of what's already been said. All right, so with that in mind, I will ask staff to state how to make public comment.
Yes, so for those of you who wish to speak, who are not on the phone. You can hover over the bottom of the screen and click on the raise your hand icon. If you are on the phone and you wish to speak, press star nine. And when I call on you. When it's your turn, press star six to unmute. And each of you will get two minutes. And with that, the first person is Michael Brook.
Hello, so there's been much discussion about the sustainability, yet nowhere tonight has there been any discussion regarding. The impact on traffic and its environmental impact on the community. Kaiser's already added 5,000 trips per day. You're adding 1,500 residential parking spaces, many of which will not work in the area, but drive in and out as well as mall, mall parking. How many trips per day are being estimated for this area based on this project?
And Mr. Brook, just so you're aware, this is just a comment on your end and not a question answer period. So if you have any other comments to make in the next one minute, please do. You're on mute.
Yes, and feedback should be questions, I'm sorry. For them to comment on.
So I think he said that his feedback is questions for us to, to consider during our discussion period.
Okay, great. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Michael. The next person up is. Vicky Johnson. Vicky Johnson, you are on mute. Vicky Johnson. She walked about. So. The next person is. Greg Nell. Greg Nell, you are up and you are also on mute. Let's keep going. Claire Helenbeck. I hope you are here. Claire?
Oh, there we go. I'm unmuted. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, I'm Claire Helenbeck. I'm a resident of Terre Linda and the responsible growth and Marin. And I would just like to comment to the fact that. This Steve, Dave, and Nandi, thank you so much for listening to our community. There's a lot to like about this project. But most of all, all of the plans regarding the town center referenced are the 2040 plan. Our community has been working on achieving a real town center for North San Rafael for more than 30 years. And we can't wait another 20 more years. I'd implore the commissioners and the design review board. To get creative, ask the designers to get creative with parking because that seems to be the reason that they're not including the town center plan. And have a look at some more creative solutions such as the Millworks Project in Nevada. Where they have a Whole Foods with residential and parking right adjacent. And to place it in the center where the town center needs to be is very short sighted and not healthy. For more than 3,000 residents that will be living there in phase one. So it really, really must go into phase one. Thank you.
Thank you. So. So one thing I'm going to do for the, just Greg and Vicky, I lowered. Your hands. So if you are wanting to speak, please, please raise your hand again. So the next. Oh, Greg does want to speak. Okay, Greg Nell.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you. I'm sorry, grabbed some water right when you called my name. You know, we, we did a demonstration dual plumbing project. Joe Shakub built an office building. And so I would like to see the proposal, look at dual plumbing. I know gray water was mentioned by Mark earlier. I'm not talking about that. Dual plumbing is you use purple pipe. For all of your toilets and non potable water in the buildings. There's a little additional cost, but I think we have to plan for drought being a permanent situation. So I think that's very important to be looked at. And done if at all penciling out, if it pencils out. Secondly, on affordable housing, I completely support the idea of working with an affordable housing developer. And on this site and, and happening quickly. This is not like we're putting them on the other side of the tracks. I mean, you could walk across the mall in two minutes. So I don't see this as ghettoizing, but it's extremely important that we get affordable housing going now. I'm sure everybody's aware that SB nine and 10 have passed and we're in danger of our neighborhoods being completely disrupted by managerial. Approved lot splits and multi-unit housing in the very near future. And if we're supporting affordable housing now, I think that gives us a possibility to perhaps protect our neighborhoods. Besides, there just is a tremendous need for affordable housing, way more than market rate housing. You know, the people that work here need to be able to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nell. And next is. Linda Jackson. Not sure if Linda is here. Linda? You're on a mute.
Okay, to commissioners and review board members, this is Linda Jackson from the Aging Action Initiative and a San Rafael resident. You have a number of questions that you ask, which are all very good. I want to say for the residential part, when you talk about the design, special design aspect. Look to the Portuguese heritage of Terre Linda and the Mediterranean climate and the aspect that that can bring. To a special, unique feeling to this, to Northgate Mall. On page 10, there's a number of design qualities that are expressed in our regulations. And I think the residential unit, you know, particularly affordable fall down on meeting the one about varied and articulated designs, stepped up facades. Entrances on the street. The affordable housing component is wonderful, keep as many units as we possibly can. But it really is not a great anchor site for residents coming down toward the mall from the neighborhood. It should be a real design destination. And for the residents, the amenity area is very challenging to understand how. The amenity area is accessible to the extent that it is for the market rate units. Yes to housing on the north side and no, the attempt to deal with the long blank walls. On the affordable housing is not successful. It does not minimize, but in fact might even emphasize it. So I'd really like to see the units facing the street in the affordable unit. And remember, this is not just mixed use projects, it'll be a mixed age project. So you need places for kids to be, you need places for older people to be, and yeah, you need places for dogs to be. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda. Next up is Bob Pendelay.
Hi, I'm speaking tonight for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. We're a group of housing, environmental and planning professionals who support. Environmentally appropriate affordable housing. And we're supporting the affordable component of this project, including the, the proposal to donate parcel one to. A nonprofit provider who would build 96 affordable units. We think that partnering with a nonprofit is an opportunity to provide the highest quality affordable housing. When we look at affordable housing that's been built by nonprofits in San Rafael, it's some of the best looking construction in town. So we think this is a good approach. Well, I'd remind you that your current housing element has a goal of building almost 570 affordable units. But to date, the city has only been able to approve or build 84 of those. We're three quarters of the way through the process, but only met 15% of the goal. And the goal for the next cycle, which begins in only 16 months, is another 1,800 affordable units. The affordable component of the Northgate project is an opportunity to have it, make a start at reaching your goal. So I'd conclude by saying, please maintain the unit count in the town center project. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Next up is Pam Reeves.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm very pleased with the fact that this will be including. Residential and commercial use. And I agree with the affordability concerns. Tonight I'm speaking from Responsible Growth Marin. And I'd like to. Take, have you all take this incredible opportunity to build with the best practices available. To reduce harm to our health and our environment and push to tier three for the green building standards code. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next up is Bob Pendelay, but I, you've already spoken. So I will be lowering hands. Next up is Susan W.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hi, thank you so much. I would like a description of, of your users, of the, who are you looking at renting of having living, to be living in the residences? Who do you see marketing the, the residential apartments to? I, I'm a little, and it seems that also where will they be working or what will they be doing? And, and how do you see them getting to where they're going? We can, I know that A-Bag plays a part in some of this, but it seems that things have changed with the pandemic. And also, um, I would be interested in some of the infrastructure thoughts regarding transportation. Seems right now that's kind of an issue. Where do you see, will another ingress, egress from highway one oh one be needed? How will cars, what's that interface going to look like involving automobiles? Because that does, even though I personally think that transit is really important and the train. I think that users tend, you know, people where they live, they still use cars. And I'd like to know something about what you envision. And also some trans, transit ideas. Are you thinking maybe to have a, a, a little bus span around the center? That would be interesting to know. Also, the, the utilities, the PG&E, what kind of increase will be needed in terms of that? So that would be of interest, I believe. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Susan. Next up is a phone number. Next up is a phone number ending in five eight nine eight. And remember to unmute, please press star six.
Hello, thank, I'm glad that the computer told me that I was supposed to press buttons and say hello. I figured out WebEx, I figured out Zoom, I had not figured out YouTube. My name is Brad Roderson. I am a partner at Hanson Bridges San Rafael office. I am also a real estate attorney and the vice chair of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, and I'm here to support this initiative by, from the chamber. And, you know, quite frankly, the chamber has always been in favor of housing. This is housing and, and both for the chamber and myself, I can say, you know, developers overlook San Rafael, they overlook Marin, they don't, there's not a welcoming place for people. As a real estate attorney, I know this very clearly. But the, you know, this developer had, you know, he even referenced the Costco period where he went, they went out to people, it was obviously not well received, they went back, they, they retooled it, they listened, and they came back with the, with the better thing. We're now all talking about very specific things, and that's great. And, and, you know, the chamber will still monitor what's going on and make sure it gets to the place. But I want, you know, people to know that, I mean, this is, if you start telling people, we want you to do these things, they come back and they do them, and you still reject them, you're going to have a real hard time convincing people that you're really pro development and you really want housing. So that's all, I'm running out of time, and I will just say, we're in support with, you know, again, we're going to make sure that it keeps getting to the finish line, but this seems like a good partner. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Next up is Matthew Hartzell.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. This is Matthew Hartzell of WTB TAM. Thank you very much for your presentation today. I agree, there's a lot to like in this plan. I would just want to draw attention real quick to the mobility and circulation, both internal and external. We've heard the presentation mention that it's going, that this is going to be a pedestrian and bicycle friendly site, but I think that there's a lot more detail that could be fleshed out here. I would like to see class four protected bikeways be integrated into this plan. Both the, the loop around the site as well as her penetrating into the center of the site and maybe an internal loop and an external loop. And also, the, it was mentioned that the North Gate Promenade pathway from the Smart Civic Center Station to the North Gate site is part of the considerations today. I was very happy to hear that. I do want to emphasize that it's very, that this North Gate Promenade will link this project to the North South Greenway, and it's part of a comprehensive, integrated, non-motorized transportation system for the county as a whole. If, if this infrastructure is completed, then people who live in these 900 to 1,300 units can not have to rely so much on automobiles. There doesn't have to be so much parking. You could reduce the parking ratio from 1.55 to something less than that. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing how this project unfolds.
Thank you, Matthew. Next up is Craig Tackeberry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. New comments. I think the mix of uses is good, and I support the staff commissar engagement to move forward quickly. I would encourage, if you need to meet again next week, just keep doing it until everybody's on board. I think the developers making a good effort and the city should meet them to move forward quickly. I thought Chris raised some really great issues. My only comment is he didn't show the importance of them, and they all kind of sounded the same level of importance. And I think that certain elements are much more important than others at this stage, which would be the site planning, sustainability elements, I think can be amended and changed later, but the site planning is going to be the key to, to how this is going to move forward. Chris mentioned reducing auto oriented north, and I would agree in 2040, they show five fast food pads, some with drive through, you know, we trying to develop the town square or freeway commercial, which that seems much more freeway commercial to me. Chris mentioned edge conditions about the project exterior. Edge conditions also apply to the public plazas. You know, to have pet oriented plazas and the buildings look kind of flat to me. I hope it'll have much more interest. He did talk about the park, and I don't understand why the park is moving in 2040. To me, the park is the focal point, the town square, and that should be center of the development of, from day one and forever. And a few things I didn't hear about that I'd like to see is some outdoor restaurant seating that's not adjacent to parked cars, and also some indoor performance space that's not just cinemas, just some type of active indoor performance space. I think it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next up is David Smith.
Hi, good evening, planning commissioners and DRB members, and also Steve, Andy and Dave from Merlin Geyer. We appreciate all the work you've done. I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin, and I just want to ask you guys to focus on the stepping down of the housing element at the south end. I know a couple of people have mentioned this, but general plan 2040 is, is very explicit that new developments must fit in with the existing neighborhoods. The, the Eichlers are single story, they're historic. And although Merlin Geyer's plans changed to reduce the height at the street edge on North Gate Drive there, it's still two and three stories high, and that would overlook the, the Eichlers. I think whatever houses were lost by stepping down further and increasing the height more gently would be pretty minimal and could easily be made up on the other housing areas that don't overlook houses. And so I would just really urge Merlin Geyer to look at that again, and also the planning commission and the DRB members to, to focus on that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Next up is Adolfo's S21 Ultra. Adolfo. Okay, Adolfo, I'm going to. If you come back. Please raise your hand again. Next is Grace Garrity.
Good evening. My name is Grace Garrity, and I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin. And I definitely am very grateful to Merlin Geyer that they're supporting connectivity to and around the town square. I do want to mention that it's really critical for the community to complete the North San Rafael Promenade as laid out in the Station Area Plan 2012 and included in general plan 2020 and 2040. So that is vital. Another area for community safety and accessibility to public transit is that bus stops be consolidated and made safer all along Las Galinas Avenue. So in general, thoughtful, beautiful, safe, and ADA accessible pedestrian walkways and bike paths should be optimized not only to and in and out of the town center, but also inside it. I think that's incredibly important to the community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Grace. Next up is Scott Farick.
Hi, thank you for having this meeting. I know there's a lot of talk and discussion from a variety of people who are involved in this project. I am a resident in San Rafael Terlinda. I live up the street from the proposed site, and I am with Responsible Growth in Marin. Tonight, I want to talk about the mixed ownership that I strongly believe that the, the ownership of the residence should be more of a next versus all residential, all rental versus no residential. I like to say that close to like 50/50 if possible, because it actually has shown that there's actually a healthy community diversity on that. Everybody who is starting a new family, who is able to buy into a smaller condo or residence to start, you know, getting equity and growth, so that they can also buy upwards. There's also workforce housing. I like that element that was described here. But then we also have an aging neighborhood here, which is a empty nesters who want to maybe downsize from a three or four bedroom house in the neighborhood, but want to stay relatively close to family and friends and don't want to necessarily move out of Terlinda. So I do want to have that part of it. I also want to speak to the edge conditions as another guy in principle. I, I believe what David Smith said, that the stepping that is proposed is not strong enough. I think the initial plan was to have a four story high residential, and now it's increased to five. And with that height, it's going to be, you know, feeling like a canyon that is going to be too big and too, especially for the edge cases and the residents around here. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Scott. Next up is Patrick Seidler.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Seidler, and I'm also with WTB TAM, which is a nonprofit that promotes the best practices of sustainable mobility for the last 29 years via Marin County, nationally and globally. I want to thank all of you for the comments, both on the staff side, the board side, and the public side, and the owner's side, for the comments on sustainability, walking and cycling. I'd like to highlight, and this is really important, that this property is virtually in the center of the primary sustainable mobility systems in Marin County. The North South Greenway, the North South Bike Way, and the North Gate Promenade. And so that's sometimes referred to by people as a multimodal pathway. And it's good to keep in mind that the North South Greenway this decade is viewed to be complete with the exception of the Alto Tunnel. And so there's an opportunity, just a block and system that'll put you into contact with the rest of the county. And so there's an opportunity to get around without cars. We need to promote those opportunities. What I would recommend is that in all future drawings, that you show all three of those systems whenever they show up on a drawing, so people can start to orient themselves, so they know where those are. The bicycle path around the other, the top of North Gate Drive, I encourage you to use the same model that you have. So the front of, on Las Galinas, which is bicycles and pedestrians separated. That's the way to do it, is to separate the modalities. And I recommend, also something to note, this is really important, is that electric bicycles sell about 500 to 1,000 times more than electric cars. So plan for the future and plan for bicycle parking in the residential and commercial areas. And I also agree with the comments to get the parking or get the access for bicycles up into the primaries, and to keep focusing on that sustainable mobility. Thank you very much.
Oops, sorry. Next up is, I was on mute. Next up is Susan Coleman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Susan Coleman. I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin. I'm a 20-year resident of Terlinda, and I'm also a real estate agent. I want you, I would like if you guys could consider that separate but equal doesn't really work when it comes to affordable housing. I think the issue here is not so much that the units all look the same. What's important is that the experience of living be the same. And numerous studies have, I'm sure you're aware, have noted that it's important for you, affordable units to be dispersed through other elements of the, of the project, so that they get the same experience of life as everyone else at market rate housing as well. So while I think it's nice that they all look alike, I think that it's important to distinguish that the experience of living is here, here is what's so important. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to comment and for everyone's hard work, including Merlin Geyer's. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next up is Jenny Silva.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity. I am here representing the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, and I wanted to talk specifically about the proposed height and residential density. And I just wanted to say that I think these are appropriate, and they do promote sustainability. And I'd very much like to see them kept and to also keep the unit count. The height and the mousing of this proposed building is consistent with the adjacent development, including the Sears Building, Macy's, Villa Marin, and the nearby seven story office complex. And there is a lot of pushback in Marin to building anything taller than already exists. And I really think that is a mistake. We have a strong ethic of conservation. We cannot keep open green space if we don't build up, and it's really important. The more dense the housing, the more green space we can keep. Dense housing is also more environmentally friendly. It supports walkable communities. It will support having workforce that, that lives in this development and they can walk to work. And it also is more efficient overall and uses less resources than less dense housing. It's more efficient to heat and to cool. It uses less water, there's less landscaping. Overall, very, very helpful in preserving our environment. I would love to see Marin become a leader in the city's development. And so I appreciate what you're doing here and really support the proposed density. And please keep the unit count. I would even support taller buildings. I know that I wouldn't have much support for that, but I do think it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Next is a phone with the last digits or the last numbers of 1336. So if you are on the phone, last number is 1336, please press star six to unmute. There you are.
Thank you. My name is Hamid Ross. I am a resident of North San Rafael and a community nonprofit member. Affordable housing is a great aspiration, and I applaud that, but affordable housing surrounded by Whole Foods and Chipotle is now still not completely affordable. I don't know affordable housing best practices, so forgive me, it's already been considered, but I want the committee and the applicant to consider community resources, things like daycare, nonprofits, community service, office and interface space, farmer's markets, things that make in addition to affordable housing services and items that make affordable housing affordable to live and practical. Affordable housing requires access to affordable business and service to thrive. These things don't take up a huge amount of space. They support affordable housing residents, and it helps make affordable housing really affordable. Also makes the project profitable by making the project a highly sought after place to live in a busy, busy business center. Also has been mentioned, I'd include the idea of bike racks, bike paths, bus stops, public transit. It doesn't look like they've been fully considered, and I think that's a good idea for future trends. The final thing is that I want to mention is just the detail, and that is with regard to affordable housing, and I've lived in affordable housing and around neighborhoods, in this regards parking, a large community is likely to attract an immense number of vital cars, which are stored everywhere, every possible roadside and lot, comes an ice war, clogs the road, and it's a problem for the community. This should be discouraged. No parking, towing, other barriers to allowing people free car storage, I think is an important consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm in. Next is David Levin. Oops. Oh, yes. Next is David Levin. Oops. Oh, yes.
Oh, good evening, and thanks for this opportunity to speak, and thanks for your work on this important project. I'm David Levin with the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. Also worked over 10 years as a housing attorney in Marin County with several local nonprofits. And like to offer support for partnering, partnering with a nonprofit on this project. It's so important because I'm sure you know nonprofits have a long and respected track record in San Rafael for providing high-quality, well-managed housing opportunities. And nonprofits can provide important supportive services that simply aren't available if affordable units are folded into a for-profit market rate project. Nonprofit affordable housing projects in San Rafael have blended well into the community. And it also strengthens public support by removing the profit stigma from aspects of the program. There's several affordable housing projects in downtown San Rafael that are among some of the most attractive buildings in the neighborhoods. So a partnership with a nonprofit will help integrate the affordable housing into this project and break down stereotypes, sometimes around affordable housing and lower-income people living there. The nonprofit developer also has a potential to bring experience and financial assets to the project that may not otherwise be available and help assure the overall success of this important project. So want to put in a word for supporting the partnering with a nonprofit. And again, please maintain the unit count that will help so many people on this project. Thank you.
You did. So I think I inadvertently lowered a hand of one of the people phoning in. So just FYI, if you have phoned in and you wish to speak, I may have lowered your hand. Please press star nine if you wish to speak. And with that, the next speaker is Byron Coth.
Now you can hear me. Good. I'm an architect. I've lived in Terlinda for a good many years. We've raised our three kids here. I also work with RGM as a designer and part of the vision that we've put forward for Merlin Geyer. We really appreciate their efforts and discussions, as well as the city for putting on this study session here. I, I did want to address one particular aspect of sustainability, and that's automobiles and vehicles, which contribute over 30% of the greenhouse gases that sort of put us into the climate crisis that we're in. I sort of see this North Gate project as a part of the, the network of the, the problem that cars produce. And, and I also see the current scheme is sort of continuing that sort of paradigm and addressing ideas that were current of the past, but maybe not towards the future. I want to encourage the team to look towards the future of transportation and modalities of transportation. I think that I want to make a pitch for structured parking. There are some great projects in Southern California that address that idea where parking doesn't have to be a mute generic box, but it can also be a dynamic structure that can, over time, adapt to other programs and other uses. So that libraries and gyms and other programming can take over those libraries and participate in the public realm in a much different way. So I would look at parts of the project that could maybe get those cars out of that central area, which is essential, because I think hundreds of cars as a centerpiece for this master plan are not really appropriate, not what the community's looking for, but I think that there are solutions when we look to the future of travel and of transportation to find alternative means and methods to integrate cars with this particular project. Thanks.
Thank you, Byron. And next is Bill Carney.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, little echoey. Bill? Try it again, Bill.
He has to unmute.
Yeah, Bill, you're on mute.
Okay. Now, can you hear me now?
Yes, it's a little echoey, but go for it.
Can I just, Bill, if you have YouTube on in the background, you might want to turn that off. It might be what's echoing.
Yeah, I think I Sorry. Okay. Jesus Christ. Okay, now.
Say something.
Could I, could I come off and try, try again?
Yes. Why don't you phone in and we'll recognize you. So next up is Adolfo's 521 Ultra. Adolfo? All right. After Adolfo is Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Silverman, and I am a 16-year resident of Terlinda. And I thank everyone here for this great opportunity. I know the community is really excited to see the development in North Gate. And I am a member of Responsible Growth in Marin. And I'm really concerned about the town center, or perhaps the lack of a town center. I'm hearing now that it's going to be maybe 2040, maybe 2050, until we can really have the final plan and be able to kind of find out what exactly is this town center that is going to hopefully be built. I believe that the town center is extremely important for the community and for the success of North Gate. And many of us go elsewhere for entertainment, for gathering. And I would like to ask Merlin Geyer if they have actually approached Kohl's and Macy's to see if there is any way to maybe negotiate their lease in some way, because it seems to be the barrier. We're waiting for this time in the future when their lease will be up for us to really see a total comprehensive plan. So perhaps if I, if that would occur, then we can really maybe have something upfront and really understand what we're getting into before waiting 20 or 30 more years. And I know that Macy's has closed hundreds of stores throughout the country. And at the last meeting, I believe that Merlin Geyer mentioned that Kohl's is reducing their square footage. So that might be an opening for us. Thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you, Laura. Next up is a phone call extension at the end, 0110. We're to press star six to unmute. Phone caller ending it in 0110. Star six to unmute. Okay. And the next one is phone caller ending in 7436. Please press, oh, there you go.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here today, and thank you for the, the presentation, and certainly appreciate having a combined planning and design session just from a logistics standpoint. I have lived in the area nearby North Gate Mall for approximately 17 years. And, you know, I definitely appreciate the, the approach and the desire to add more housing, which is desperately needed. You know, certainly students returning home from college may not want to move back in. You've got all sorts of young adults. You certainly have an aging population that may want to stay in the area. So appreciate the, having the additional housing. What concerns me is that our small valley of 15,000 people is being expected to absorb 13, excuse, 1,300 units. And granted, I understand that only 900 of those will be in in the next five years. But that's, that's kind of like having a shot of 10% growth in a very short period of time. And it's a very small space. And I don't know that, you know, when you, when you think about, you know, infill housing and what it looks like in other parts of Marin, this is significantly larger, and there's going to be a significant impact to the neighborhood. I'm concerned about the edge case, all the, all the homes that are right along North Gate Drive and even up into South Terlinda. When you think of the traffic, the cut through on Golden Hind and Nova Albion and the impact of traffic already exasperated by the high school in Kaiser, I think the height next to those single-story homes is inappropriate. I'm also concerned about the parking around the area. You know, I think a lot of us moved to this area to be in somewhat of a suburban area. And this feels like it's being turned into something more urban, more akin to being in downtown San Rafael, which is certainly not what I intended when I moved here 17 years ago. I am concerned about the lack of town center in the immediate future, and I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next up is Bill Carney. Bill?
Okay, I'm back without the phone this time. Thank you. So yeah, I wanted to echo the concern about the center of the, of the development. You know, I, I think what's been sketched in response to earlier comments, what's been sketched about, you know, this little postage stamp of an open space in the center of a sea of parking. Just, I think, serves to illustrate what's really needed here is a large convincing open space that really sets the identity and character of the center and integrates both the retail function and the residential function. And, you know, the site plan here is perfect for that, but we really need this sort of bold statement such as reasonable growth has put forward of really using that whole space as a centerpiece, open space. Funded with retail rather than with cars. So it's activated both by the residents and also by, by the shoppers. And, you know, so right out of the box, this could really be a signature development that would be good for the developers and certainly good for the community. And then coupled to that, of course, housing, much needed. Sustainable San Rafael would like to see as much as possible on the site. And with as many workforce units and affordable units as, as can be achieved. So with those two touchstones, I think the ingredients are here for a really great addition to the, to the city. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bill. With that, at this point, there is no one else who has their hand raised. So if you do wish to speak, if you haven't yet spoken, please raise your hand. If you're phoning in by pressing star nine, otherwise by using the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen. And I see no more. No more requests for public comment.
Thank you. And thank you to the public for sharing your feedback. Appreciate kind of staying on focus here and providing very helpful feedback. And so at this point, we're going to bring this discussion back to the commissioners and design review board. At this point, now we'll open this up to comments and feedback from, from the commissioners and design review board members. Maybe what I'll do here is just walk down the list that we have, starting with the DRB members. So when I call upon your name, we can provide comments and any feedback on the project. Before we do that, will also be helpful to steer some of this is in addition to any notes that we took from the, from the public comments. Christopher, if you could also provide or pull up the, the slides that have various questions. That will be helpful for guiding discussion. I know that there are a bunch of different slides, but I think that it'd be useful to have that up there. So if we want to refer to some of these questions or guide some of the discussion based on that, we can do that.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. While he's pulling that up, I'll start with design review board member Kent. And we'll just go down the list and then go down to the commission.
Alrighty. I certainly appreciate the applicant's presentation. I think, I think I have a much better understanding of the project. I think there was a lot of good ideas and a lot of hard work and thought that went into this. Having said that, probably my biggest disappointment is really the center of the project. You know, giving the project over to cars, I think is really the wrong direction. I think Bill Carney probably spoke eloquently about that, saying that, you know, there's a chance to have a signature piece there. You know, inviting cars in there and the noise and, you know, the exhaust and the potential pedestrian conflicts, I think is just really the wrong thing to do there. And I think you can do something really special there. You know, overall, when I looked at the project, it looked like overall, there was, you know, it was probably driven a little bit too much by surface parking to begin with, and particularly in that centerpiece. You know, I mentioned earlier the importance of solving the stormwater issues and mitigation issues, that you don't use the landscape to do that, because that, you know, that would totally, you know, change the way the look and feel and how the landscape would be used. And, you know, they have a pretty good aggressive program for the landscape, and I think it's utterly important for this community to retain their ideas and, you know, a little design minutia, it might be a little too early for this, but but, you know, purple pipe is reclaimed water, and reclaimed water has a very different chemistry than than potable water has some real impacts on what plants you can use. So just be aware of that as you're going forward with your landscape design. You know, in this day and age, you know, putting in turf in these areas is probably nonsensical from a maintenance and a water use standpoint. So any turf that's in this really should be artificial turf, and there's artificial turf. You know, brands are out there that look really great and, and really need to be considered for this purpose. You know, I, you know, I'm a little concerned that the site is big enough that if you don't have really good pedestrian connections, that people will park and repark. So I think your pedestrian connections in this project are absolutely critical to its success. And I think that probably my last comment is having your dog park in a real central area, you probably need to relocate that to one of the outline pocket parks that can be noisy, they can smell bad, and probably having that right outside the entry to the center is probably not a good location. Other than that, I think there's been a lot of good thoughts. I think, you know, Larry Paul's comment that it may be a little too, the architecture may be a little too urban for the site, I think is worth noting, but I think the stepping down and and the way that the buildings have been broken up and, and interior parking is hidden, and the rest is under the buildings. I think those all are, are really good, really good decisions. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. Next up is member Reg. Reg, how do you pronounce that?
Reggie?
Reggie.
Sure. Okay, I have a lot of notes, so I'll try and be as organized as I can. I think I agree with a lot of the comments that the, the way this development has really turned into a mixed-use development is encouraging. Right off the bat, I see a huge disconnect between what's written as the guiding principles and what's seen in the site plan. I think the, the idea that cheap surface parking is driving this, you know, really uncontextual height is something that really needs to be looked at deeply. The idea of structured parking was talked about by The idea of structured parking was talked about by some of the, you know, the public. I think that's a really important component. The, the other idea is the um parcel one as affordable housing and having it all, you know. In one location is really concerning, that's a very outdated, um, in my mind, way of incorporating affordable housing into the, this development. And I think that same logic of, okay, this is a parcel that's parking can be developed quickly. Cannot only be applied to one component of the program. So if that's how affordable housing is located, why isn't that how the town center is also located? And the town center or town square, however you want to call it, does not have to be in the center of this ring road development. I think there could be some creative thinking about how um those parking lots up on the west side, you know, which are largely undeveloped. Could be that town center. There's this idea of um the edge conditions and what was it called? Welcome uh welcoming people into the development. And I don't see either on Mary Dell or North Gate, a welcoming component to the entry to this development. I think there's a lot of dispersed minor entrances, but there's nothing that says you've arrived. So I think there really needs to be some um rethinking around the amount of surface parking and how that's driving. Really the look and feel and, you know, placement of these new buildings. Um, the pedestrian friendly design, I really don't understand right now. It seems like you park and then you walk around maybe. And to me, that's not pedestrian friendly, there's like an isolation and all, but I think we need to see those fingers. Going out into a more multi-modal comprehensive pedestrian and bike friendly environment. Thinking about safety for all the accessible users as well as, you know, these different forms of transportation. Um, one of the guiding principles, considering existing adjacent buildings and use transitional elements to minimize height. I agree with some of the public comments on the south and the west, you know, specifically those renderings of parcel one. There's absolutely a five-story wall, you know, that may be differentiated vertically. But the actual breaking up of the structure is very minimal. So I think that's something that um really needs to be looked at. I'm also curious why the, um, you know, for minimizing height in respect to the edge conditions. Why the tallest buildings are adjacent to the shortest existing buildings? Right? So on the um, the south side where we have the one-story uses. Are the one-story Eichlers and some of the development on that side, we have these four and five-story buildings. If that were rotated more to the, I mean, if my orientation right more to the west. Where there's a, a, you know, a steeper hillside and more of a buffer. Would that be more respectful of the existing conditions? Um, and I have to think that would help a little bit. Um, let's see. So I also agreed with some of the public comment that breaking up of the residential units. Um, between the affordable and the for rent or hopefully for purchase units is important to provide this integration of the community and provide the liveliness that. Was talked about. Again, you know, not to reiterate, but the town center, this idea of an isolated. Uh, you know, whether it's artificial or real grass center in the center of parking. Uh, to me, doesn't really provide the vitality that I think uh the community is hoping for. And then let's see, community kind, community connectivity. I think I mentioned this earlier, that idea of the multi, multi-modal connectivity to both smart train. And other forms of transportation, I'm really picturing that this site needs these fingers. That go out and not only do you have some uh, you know, ability to walk within the site, but you can really. Get to the site and enjoy it from different parts of the city. And I think that could be pretty exciting. We heard about the one down on Mary Dell. I mean, maybe that's the welcome moment to the um site that, you know, draws people in and has. Um, this kind of sense of arrival in place that North Gate Town Square really wants to have. Um, on the sustainability side, I think the idea that uh the project is needing the, you know, mandatory measures. Is not that exciting to me. I think pushing it to tier two or tier three should absolutely be required for a development of this size. I know there's a number of um ways that that's been talked about, but I'd like to see, you know, a lot more discussion on. Eliminating um the use of gas, electrification, renewable energy and really making this a, you know, future forward development. That um is, is more of a showcase. Um, and I think that's all my comments.
Okay. Awesome, appreciate that. Uh, next up, member Paul.
Thank you. Um, I um, I would echo a lot of Sarah's comments. And I um also mentioned before that I think that a lot of these questions that have come up on the uh. Site plan that Christopher has shown, uh, I would agree with, I think it needs a lot more thought. Uh, I, I, I applaud the. Applicants in as much work as they have done in fleshing out a lot of the details. But I'm concerned that the big picture has been kind of passed. And there, this site plan has been decided upon and now we're just trying to make it look as good as possible. My concern is compared to the current mall footprint. This footprint. Covers a lot of the site. It's going to be a very high density, very intense development. And I don't think it's going to fit in to the more suburban context of Terre Linda. I've been a resident for thirty-three years. I've gone through a lot of these vision committees and I, I don't know if. The applicants have done so or not, but they should look at the North San Rafael vision that we had done about twenty years ago. There was a town center uh envisioned and it wasn't. In this location, it was more accessible to the. The entire um area of Terre Linda. This is one of the reasons why the North San Rafael uh promenade was done. To come along uh Las Colinas uh to the uh future smart station. And there would be some kind of a uh, a town center. Might possibly have a public library associated with it at one time, we thought about that. An entertainment venue, maybe a amphastall amphitheater, something like that where it'd be a real gathering spot. For all the residents of Terre Linda, not just the people that are living at the North Gate Mall. So I encourage the applicants to revisit that North San Rafael vision if they haven't already. And try and glean some of the, I think, excellent work that was done by all the community. Has a lot of input, I think that was about a two-year uh process. Also, at the same time, I, unfortunately, I've been around so long, I've been involved in a lot of these, these uh processes. We had another in a vision uh process down at uh where uh the Fairchild's uh, I'm not, I'm sorry, the uh. Uh, PG, the old P G N E site was downtown San Rafael. There's a lot of different ideas about that, that was going to be a high-density development, much more urban scheme. You might take a look at that as well because there were some great ideas that came out of that. And that leads me to um my main focus, I, the, the residential, it's wonderful that we're producing. A lot more residential, this is a great site for it. But it seems like it is just covering at least a third of the site with very high-density. Four and five-story buildings that admittedly are, are cascading down a little bit. But I think that, like Sarah said, it's on the southern end, it's meeting these one-story buildings. And it's not going to be met very well. Um, if, if they could be pulled back from North Gate Drive significantly, that might help. Um, I'm, I'm remembering all the comments we got when Costco was the uh. Uh, project and that was only a, what a two, two-and-a-half-story building. And a lot of people were concerned about the massing of that. I, I think that, again, like has been mentioned. Surface parking is driving a lot of this and I don't quite understand why because the, the park, we've got this huge. Two-story parking structure on the south side of Coles, which I go to Northgate all the time and it's very seldom used. And the parking, the surface parking on the north side of Coles is used. Somewhat, but it could be, it, it could be put to a better use. The parking, surface parking at the northwest corner of the site is almost always bare. Hardly anyone uses that. Matter of fact. Uh, I, I don't understand why we don't do something more with that. The, I understand the constraints of the parking for Macy's, but I guess we would need to see. How much or where that constraint is actually, is it all, it can't be all to the north of Macy's. And it can't be all to the east of Macy's either because you're planning to use that part. So exactly where is the um uh restrictions for parking for Macy's? To me, I see the, the northern end of the site along Las Colinas. A perfect place to put more high-density housing, possibly over the parking. Because again, surface parking creates these heat sinks that are not good for the environment anyway. So if we cover them, we still have, we still have covered parking, which everybody likes anyway. Um, you would have a raised podium with the residential above. And that would seem to make more sense when you get the high-density. Um, heights of these buildings. Across the street from the commercial buildings on Las Colinas like the banks, the Wells Fargo and. What was, I think, United Bank and all that. Um, that would allow the residential, if there's still going to be residential on the south side, to be pulled back. More towards the cinema and allow a little more green space. And that could be a possibility for where the dog parks are or whatever. And. It, I think it would help to consolidate the site a little bit more so that there would be more green space, more open space than there is now. Because there's, I don't see, I, it's relatively little for a suburban mall at this point. Um, this may, I, I also agree that the town square, if there's going to be a town square. And that, there could be two, actually, there could be a town square for the, the center itself and the residences. But it seems like the North San Rafael vision wanted a town center. For all of Terre Linda and it feels a little um hard to get to if it's just in the, where the town square is right now. And the town square as it is right now, being right next to a parking lot, just doesn't seem to be a good design. Now, having said all that. This may sound a little crazy, but I could see. That the, some residential could be put in even high-rise uh structures. In the center of the site, pulling all the density into the center of the site. And then letting everything on the edges be more open. It would create a very urban uh scheme, but it, because of the largeness of the site. It might work and it would be a real signature project for North San Rafael. Because I think that's one of the things that came out of the North San Rafael vision was that we were looking for some signature project. On the, in the North Gate Mall area. Um, that, the massing of this project seems to be. What bothers me most, it seems like it's a very high dense, high-density, very intense. And very heavy massing of a project and mainly to the south where it's open to the north with these surface parking lots. And it seems like that's kind of. The wrong uh direction for it to have taken. And then the, the two-story, again, the two-story parking garage on the south of um. Of the uh Cole site seems to be a lost opportunity. So I, I really encourage the, the applicants to go back to the drawing board and reconsider some of these things. As much as, as much as they've done so far, it, to me, it seems it has some fatal flaws that is going to be very difficult. Now, the final thing I'd like to say is that I know this is a long-range project, two thousand forty, two thousand fifty. But we need to see what is actually going to be done in phase one. Because if phase one is done right, it could be. The precursor for everything else. If it's done wrong. The developer may not be around for twenty forty or twenty fifty. And we could be stuck with a project that is incomplete. And so as beautiful as it may look on paper, if it's not capable of being completed, uh, I'd hate to see that. So those are my comments and I'm sorry to, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm trying to just say that I think, I think it needs to be more. Needs more thinking and and real design work uh put in. Oh, I would like to say also, the architectural part of it, there are some glimpses of real good architectural design. But these massive buildings that um, I don't get the looking, picking up the Eichler aesthetic. Or the Frank Lloyd Wright aesthetic, both of which, both of which I love. But the, I think the designers need to go back to the drawing board. These are, this one, this one right here that's being shown right now, it's probably got the most promise because at least. It seems like it's broken up at least horizontally and vertically. Whereas the other ones are very massive buildings, this is like a. Uh, it's a very massive building and it's not articulated very well. It could easily be an office building or an R and D building. Doesn't to me say that it's a residential building at all. And I think again, someone said the ground floor, the first floor uh, ground floor needs to be pedestrian oriented. And that, that really doesn't work in this one at all, so. Um, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks for those, uh, member Kowalski.
Uh, I, first of all, I'd like to say, I think the planners who did the analysis, I agree with their points. They made good points and I'm not going to reiterate them all. Um. I also, also my um previous members, I agree with what Sarah and Larry talked about. I want to add just a couple of things. One, I think. That there isn't a big design concept here and we need a big concept. We need a thought process, not just dropping buildings around. And I think that the zoning really needs to be thought about because I don't think it's well-zoned or well-thought-out. Not integrated with the pedestrian and, and even the community around. So I, I, I call on the, the developer. While I see you've done a lot of work, I think it's now time to really go back and go to the guiding principles and get a big concept and not make little pieces. Um, and the whole brick thing, it doesn't come from anywhere around here. It's a northeast housing uh idiom. Um, so I'd like you to really come in with a strong concept, which I don't see here. I see a lot of work and a lot of thought, but pull it together and get a big picture. Thank you.
Thanks. Member Summers.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I don't know how to follow all that. So Larry and Sarah, um, I, I pretty much agree with a lot of what they said. Some of what struck me was, you know, even though it was spoken about the attempt to reduce the massing along the um. The North Gate Drive and that uh parcel one site, I, I'm, I'm not convinced it was successful. And, you know, the elephant in the room is still, all this parking in those areas that's being dedicated in these buildings, being dedicated to Macy's and Coles and all that. And it seems to really be stifling the ability to think about this whole site. And I, and you know, and granted, you guys have done what you can under the circumstances, I understand. Um, so it's a difficult. Um, I have a problem with that significant amount of development along those um. Single-family residential sides just being so vertical. Um, I'm really troubled by what's happened. I know our general plan forty, you know, twenty forty, everything's talked about, you know, the zoning and heights of all these kinds of sites. But, I mean, we all know we're getting hammered again and again and again with density bonuses and people coming in with two stories extra. So I think our general plan needs to actually even be looked at and, and kind of assume that these sites are going to come in with people asking for twenty-four-foot height bonuses. And we have to take that into account. when we look at these applications in the first place. So I don't know how we reconcile that because everyone's rallying around those and this board and the planning commission, I know we, we've seen it again and again. And we get these, um, these giant height density bonuses, uh, crammed down our throat. It almost makes me want to say, okay, let's just zone everything a single story because we know we're going to get two more stories. I mean, honestly, it's like, I think some of these areas need that. So that being said, I think some further mass reducing techniques, we're the designer review board, not the policy guys in terms of parking and traffic and whatnot. So from a pure design standpoint, on those buildings on that side, when they come back through, I think a greater effort for articulation and stepping the upper floors back. I'm not saying that you can't have your 60 foot high building, but where it approaches the adjacent neighborhoods, every effort should be made to make those upper floors more pedestrian. If there was a manner where a car driving by can hardly see them because those upper levels are stepped further back, then that's what I would be searching for is to push that. I do appreciate Larry's comments about, you know, the intensity and Sarah's about the intensity around the perimeter of the site. Maybe some of that intensity needs to actually be pushed inwards, which would offer some relief from those neighborhoods also. So I think some of those guiding concepts actually make some sense. Um, Larry's kind of radical idea of the park, the housing over the structured parking, not the worst idea. So I think that's, and that's an area of the site where the site could be more dense. So, um, boy, I wish Macy's and those people are out of your way because I think it, like, we're all being hamstrung by it. So, um, but Larry's right, we're going to live with this for the next 50, 60, 70 years. So maybe we shouldn't be hamstrung by those things and be more radical about looking at those. Uh, comments about the promenade vision being completed, I think that certainly, um, needs to be paid attention to. The open spaces, some of these spaces in these parks don't look necessarily to me like the way they're kind of pigeonholed in, that they might not be used that much because they don't look exactly like the most pleasant spaces. So, um, so I think some thought into those spaces, the dog park, you know, the, it doesn't belong in that location. And those, those kinds of things along the perimeter might actually be better to offer the, some of those amenities to, um, neighboring communities as well. So otherwise, you know, Sarah and Larry, um, brought so many good things up. I'm going to kind of give a nod to what, uh, those guys said. And, um, and hopefully that helps pile on for when you come in with a formal app. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll start moving on to commissioners, starting with Commissioner Harris.
Uh, I don't have any, I don't have much to add, um, that wasn't already added. So I will say no comment. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Haveman?
Um, thanks very much. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not echo, uh, a great few sentiments that have already been expressed, but I'll, I'll agree, agree with them and, and, and support them. Where, where I wanted to devote my comments, um, maybe I previewed this a little bit earlier. I say the affordable housing, uh, part of the plan. Um, it, the, the phrase separate but equal, um, was brought up in the public comment and, and that's a little bit of what's, what's going on here. Um, only, only I, they're separate, but, but not equal. Um, uh, Larry Paul mentioned that the, the, the building in parcel one, uh, you know, could, could be an office building. Um, its exterior is different from the exterior of the building. So everybody's going to know that that is the low income complex tucked away behind, uh, the parking lot. Um, I, I'm not sure that I find the argument that, that, that while we're working with a nonprofit and, and that's great to be all that compelling for concentrating, uh, on a permanent basis, uh, all of the affordable units, um, back in that corner, as they're all rentals. And I would think that as the other, uh, parcels are developed, we could move some of the affordable, uh, units, uh, away. Um, and maybe that takes some, some create to bring about. But, uh, you know, I, I, I grant you, if, if we were just building parcel one, um, and, and somebody said, I wanted to make that all affordable housing. Um, I think that we would all applaud it, but it's a part of such a, a, a larger development that I'm not sure that that, that makes sense or is consistent, um, with ideals laid out elsewhere. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the town square. I will echo that. Um, yeah, the, the town square, uh, surrounded by, uh, all the parking lots, um, it, it strikes me as a, as a grassy space in the middle of a Whole Foods parking lot. I mean, everybody's going to want to park, uh, in that area. Um, so there'll be a lot of traffic flowing through it, making the, the, the town square much less desirable. Um, and, and I think that if the town square did butt up against all of the retail restaurants without their seating, no parking around, that could be highly desirable in the beginnings of, of something that's, that's more appealing and going to attract more people, um, from the neighborhood. Um, I, I do worry a lot about traffic, um, through, uh, the development. Um, I think that there are a number of roads, uh, that need not be roads, but could be green space. Um, it's similar between parcel two and the cinema, perhaps between parcel one and, uh, and the parking lot. Um, I guess I'll just sort of summarize the thing, you know, this is, uh, it strikes me as an extremely car oriented, uh, development. Um, and I'm not sure that that's, uh, an appropriate place to be heading. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll say that, that this is an enormous improvement over what is currently there, an enormous improvement over Costco, um, headed in the right direction. Um, but perhaps some, some significant editing could be done, could happen. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Lubomirski?
Uh, thank you. Um, some context, I remember the Northgate Mall as being, um, a open air mall with a cool fountain and a fountain you can walk down the steps to. And I fell in many times as a little kid in Kenny's shoes. And I also remember working at Sears as a loss prevention person for a couple of years and finished up my Northgate time as the assistant manager at the Northgate when it was one theater. So I spent quite a bit of time on this, uh, parcel. Uh, let me go left to right. I think that, um, yeah, the density in the southern end of the, of the site is, is problematic, but I think it, it kind of works. I would love to see, and I don't know about costs, um, access from the street to maybe the, the units along the outside, um, just to give it a feel of like more of housing or more of a, a single family house than just a big apart, uh, apartment complex. Again, I don't know, I'm sure it's prohibitively expensive, but that would give it a less, less kind of, I don't know, um, downtown industrial kind of a feel, maybe. Um, I have no problem with the residential parcel, the low income being, um, all in one location. I take it, um, I take it on faith that the developer says though, all the fittings and furnishings will be the same. It will allow, I think from experience, um, the partnership. So that's the key, get them in at an affordable, um, accessible rate. I, I had, the, the town square is kind of a joke. I'm thinking now of Sonoma or Heelsburg or, uh, 300 feet on a side. Having, having had kids in a previous life, it seems, I'm not going to play in a town square with cars moving all about the town square. So that kind of needs to be figured out. I, 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 you know, again, this is big picture, I don't know where, but it just doesn't work there. And it's not large enough to be a, a viable space. I think it, I, to Larry's point, I agree that it should have some awesome amenities and amphitheater, things to bring people from, from the community to, to, um, to this, uh, area. Uh, skating rink is an awesome example. And when they throw the skating rink in, it was great. People went to the mall from the community and something similar to that, akin to that. Uh, I like, I mean, I, it's funny that Larry and I must think the same line because I thought, let's go up, um, against the hill. Because I, I, and I don't know what the requirements are with major one, where Coles is now. But it seems like, eh, with the hill right there and the building on the corner, kind of, you could go up eight stories and it would just kind of blend right in. It might feel a little bit like a tunnel, um, going down Northgate Drive. But I think if it, if it pulled, pulled some of the density away from where it exists now, that might be, uh, might be acceptable in a way to, to work it out. I guess the last thing is I, I think we got to take our time and make sure this is done right. Because it's going to be with us for a very, very long time. I would like to see, again, I don't know if this is doable, um, separate phase one, phase two. See how phase one goes. See how, what the, what the traffic's like. I mean, I know you can do all these different kind of studies and stuff, but see what it's like before we commit to phase two. And I don't know financially that's possible. See what it's like when all the housing goes in up by, um, four points. I know that ha, from a person who goes to Terolinda High School every day during the school year, Kaiser moving most of their activity from the hospital to Los Camos has made a huge difference. I don't know how many trips that is, I imagine it's thousands that don't go down, um, to the hospital and to the medical offices anymore because they're on Los Camos. So traffic, um, for me is less of a concern. I know, I know it's a concern, but I still, I would like to separate the phase one, phase two. Um, I like the architecture, I just don't like the white, I, you know, I don't know. It, it just, to me seems out of place. Again, I'm, I'm not DRB, you guys do a great job. So I'm going to defer all those architectural ins and outs. I guess that's it. I mean, I'm excited about it and I hope if we can do a few things to get it moving along 20, 2040, 2050, you guys might be on your own at that point with, uh, me. But, um, you know, I hope, I hope we take our time and do it right. And, um, you're all invited to San Rafael High School Friday night, um, to watch the Bulldogs play. First home football game this year, Friday night. So there you go. Thanks.
Sorry about that. Um, Commissioner or Vice Chair Prepitali?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, so yeah, I agree with, uh, the majority of the comments. Um, I also say I am also extremely happy that this site is being redeveloped. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, my neighbors and, uh, my family, uh, moved to Terolinda. Many of my neighbors moved to Terolinda, um, within the last few years expecting this site to be, uh, redeveloped and to be created or to be turned into a, a town square. I, uh, I would like to see, uh, the affordable housing, uh, distributed, but I don't think that prevents us from having residential, uh, parcel one be all affordable housing in partnership with a nonprofit, like to see both of that. Both of those things happen. You know, with regard to the town square placement, I agree with the majority of, uh, folks who, um, believe it is, um, in the wrong place. It seems hidden to me, sort of sequestered, inaccessible. You know, I noticed that, um, major three, the major three building, um, that is, has yet to be built. And I'm wondering if, um, perhaps major three in the town square could simply be swapped, where you push the major three up into the middle. Um, I think it would be beneficial to have the tar, town square be larger as people have talked about, um, and more accessible particularly from, um, Los Brunchitos Road and Mary Dale, which are both public streets. So I think that would solve the problem of accessibility, um, and also a connection between, um, the, uh, the parcel and, uh, public transport, like through, uh, the smart train and, and, and the, the bus stops along Los Colinas. The other thing that I, that was intriguing to me is a person mentioned, um, structured parking. And I, I think that would be obviously a very good solution if it penciled out. I was kind of surprised to not see, um, more structured parking actually taking the place of surface parking. And then, um, the last comment I will make is around, um, renegotiating the leases. You know, I know that, um, I've been into Macy's a few times and, um, the inventory there is very slim. And I suspect that, uh, that store is probably not penciling for them. I, I don't know, but I wouldn't be surprised if they would be interested in renegotiating their lease and downsizing. I don't know if that's the case for Coles. Coles has, seems to have a lot more density of its inventory than Macy's. But, um, yeah, Macy's space just seems to be too big for them right now. But once again, thank you to Merlin Geyer for all the attention that you're, um, providing to the site and to our, to our neighborhood. We appreciate all your work.
Thanks. Is there anybody that I somehow left out? Everyone's covered. Okay, great. So to, to the, uh, to the applicant, um, we really appreciate the, the work that you put into this. Hopefully this was a constructive session. Um, I, I think that the public comments were, were really excellent and being sort of focused in answering a lot of the questions that you presented on screen. Think that the, the comments that you've received now from the designer review board, as well as the commission, should also provide some good sort of directionality in terms of, um, you know, what are some of the things to, to kind of look at and address as you, as you revisit designs? So I think that this has been, uh, in, in my book, a very constructive conversation. There, there is no emotion. I think this is just, uh, this is again, meant to be just a study session, um, to kind of walk through the concepts that you have right now, get some good feedback, which I think you have. So I think there's, um, some, a lot to work with at this point on board in your application. So, um, I think at that, at this point, um, are there any last comments from anybody before I move on to the director's report?
Here's smoothie, may I, um, before you complete your, um, this, this part of the conversation, one of the things that I want to make sure the applicant gets guidance on, and I'm not sure that I heard it, um, is just in relation to the density. Um, I know I heard it from some of the DRB members, but the direction that they're receiving from the planning commission is going to be important as they move forward. Their density allowable units are 2,000 units approximately and they're proposing 1,300. And I just, I think it'd be important to get the planning commission to provide some input on, on the number of units.
Okay. Um, how would you propose, um, kind of breaking this down, Ali?
Um, well, I heard, I did hear that there was an interest in having a combination of the, um, affordable housing site as well as a mix of, uh, affordable units within the, um, development. And so I guess the question is, within the development that they're proposing, is that kind of what the overall, um, comments are from the individual planning commissioners? And if there isn't anything, um, that you want to add, that's fine. I just, I think that was one of the questions that the, um, applicants would like to receive feedback on.
Okay, yes, I did hear, I did hear one comment in particular around, um, uh, massing towards the center as opposed to the edges. Were there any additional perspectives, um, around either the, the specific density, the specific number of units that, uh, we wish to raise or give guidance on? I'll leave this open for, for open conversation at this point.
Was I mistaken when I heard that, I heard that there would be focused in that one parcel, but there would also be, um, multiple, multiple units spread out the rest of the project? That, that's what I understood. Was I incorrect in understanding that?
So parcel one would be developed with an affordable housing development in partnership with an affordable housing developer. But that in and of itself would not represent the top 10% required of onsite units. So the remainder of the 10% would be dispersed through the remainder of the development.
Thank you.
Could I say something about, uh, density?
I think it was you, yes.
I think, you know, one of, one of the things that, uh, we sometimes lose sight of is density, uh, is not only numbers, but it's also square footage. And like you could have 2,000 units of smaller, smaller units that would be less intense than 1,000 units of very large units. I, I, I'm, I applaud the developers for going all rental at this point. They're saying that they're not going to sell these units, they're gonna, they're gonna rent them. And typically rental units are going to be smaller than, uh, uh, ownership units, uh, because they're more transient. So I think, you know, you, we could have the, the number of units that they are proposing now or even more if they're smaller units and compacted more rather than spread out over the entire site. So, you know, maybe the, the concept of, uh, density should be more expressed in terms of how much square foot are you developing rather than the number of units? That's my input. Thanks.
I'll, I'll mention, uh, I have a comment. So, uh, you know, I think that the, the number of units, uh, on the site should be, uh, 2,000, if that's the limit. We need more housing units. And, uh, I also am in favor of, um, a good portion being owned versus rented. I know that there's a, as I think was mentioned during the public I know that there's a, as I think was mentioned during the public comments, there's a lot of interest in people who are, you know, no longer in need of such large spaces in their homes like seniors in the Terre Linda community and the Sanford community, staying in the community and, but they don't, what I've heard from my neighbors is that they don't want to rent, they would rather buy. So, yeah, if you could increase the, the share of owned units and also just increase the number of units to the maximum, I think that would be beneficial for the community.
If, if I may, just on the, the affordable housing one more time. So, so the, the plan calls for phase one to hold, I believe, 7.1% of the affordable housing units after phase two is completed. And, you know, the, the city adopted what is zoning ordinance section 14.16. And it says the units may be clustered within the residential project when the city determines that such clustering furthers affordable housing opportunity. And it's not clear to me how this clustering furthers affordable housing opportunity. It makes it easier for the developer certainly, but I'm not sure how it increases affordable housing opportunities more broadly. Thank you.
Any other, any other thoughts on that? So Ali, this is along the lines that you, you had in mind?
Yes, thank you. Sorry I was on mute.
No worries. Okay. Awesome. So I hope that, I hope that these additional bits of guidance around density and sort of the use of density are helpful in encapsulating both the community's thoughts as well as thoughts of both the commission and the designer review board. Hopefully that, like I said, the session was valuable, both for the public in terms of getting a really clear sense of like the specific considerations and questions that the developer is being asked as a sort of a demonstration of, of good, good, good faith in this process. And I hope, you know, likewise from the community, this was, was helpful in giving a sense of, you know, what are the pieces that are important as you kind of consider and evolve this project? So at this point, I'm going to close out our discussion period for the, the study session. This is a very useful study session. And at this point, we're going to move on to the director's report.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to unmute him, I, no, okay.
Should we let the DRB people go? Let the DRB people go? Do they want to hear our report?
Oh, it's up to them.
I don't know.
It's up to city interest. So anyway.
Thank you for inviting us to this. I thought you got a great meeting, but I don't need to hear your report, so I'm gonna exit.
I'll let you, yeah, thank you all for joining. If you want to exit, feel free to do so.
Thanks for the party.
I won't take it personally. So the director's report, as you probably are aware, but just a reminder, the city council on August 2nd adopted both the general plan 2040 and the downtown precise plan. So that is super exciting and the general plan 2040 took effect right away and the downtown precise plan should take effect tomorrow. So you will be starting to see those changes in your staff reports and the analysis. The next is the housing element is being, update is getting kicked off and the update will be managed by our consultant Barry Miller, who is also the, the lead project manager for the general plan 2040 and downtown precise plan. And at your next meeting, Barry will be bringing a brief report with a request for nomination for a commissioner to serve as a member of the housing element steering committee. So we're not going to discuss it now since it's not on the agenda, but if you'd like to think about someone you may like to nominate and/or if you'd like to participate on that steering committee, do think about it. And at the upcoming planning commission meeting, the next one, it will be the continuation of the 5254 Fremont project, which is a reconfiguration of two lots, one that has a single-family home that is being renovated and one that will contain a, will be developed with a second single-family home in a rather steep hillside parcel. And then the last thing is our COVID update in terms of public meetings. We do not have any certain news on when to expect onsite planning commission meetings. However, the goal at this point is to continue to strive, to strive for in-chamber meetings, but only when it is safe to do so. And that concludes the director's report.
Can we, can we vote on that? Can we put that to a vote?
And we try and meeting in, in chamber?
Roll up, we'll just roll up with our laptops. Sit down, it's not, you know, come, all right.
You can meet at a park, that would be.
I'm, I'm game.
Yeah, I second that.
Yeah.
Hey, I appreciate everybody. I probably won't be seeing you much, but thanks for everything you do and for, you know, the work that you provide and input you provide to, for, you know, making the community a better place. And I'll miss you guys, but you're in great hands.
We're, it doesn't work like, you don't just get away. We'll come and visit and we'll, I'll wear my mask. I'll wear a mask though, but we'll, something big will happen, you'll be here, you watch. All right, thank you for everything you guys, you do. It's been awesome to work with you two.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ali. Thank you.
Bye.
You done?
Hi. All right, great. If any PC members have any communication, please share now. All right, hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.